I'd like to call this meeting to order of the Placer County Board of Supervisors Tuesday, March 24th. Today, the Flag Salute will be led by me. If you'd please stand and join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Statement of the meeting procedures now will be read by our clerk, Ann Coleman.
Welcome to the Placer County Board of Supervisors meeting of March 24th, 2009. Agendas are available on the wall outside this meeting room. If you are here to speak on an issue not appearing on the agenda, you may do so during the public comment period. There is a three-minute time limit per speaker. The board is not permitted to take action on items addressed under public comment. When you speak, clearly state your name and address for the record. All items on the agenda will be open for the public to address before final action is taken. There's a three-minute time limit per speaker, which will be monitored by a timer on the podium. If there is another person, if there is a person speaking on behalf of a group with no other testimony from another member of the group, please identify yourself as such and your time may be extended at the pleasure of the board. Keep in mind that the chairman has the discretion of limiting the total discussion time on any item. If you are hearing impaired, we have listening devices available. It is requested that all pagers and cell phones be either turned off or put in the silent mode. Thank you for your participation and cooperation.
Thank you, Ann. Now it's time for public comment. Anybody wishing to address the board on any item not on the agenda, please come to the podium there and we'd like your name and address, please, just for the record.
Physical address or just the town?
Whatever you want to give.
Okay. Bobby Capps, Forest Hill. I came, I already contacted Supervisor Montgomery about this issue. There's YouTube videos going on that I believe are dangerous to not, they're dangerous to society in general and I think, I believe they violate the First Amendment rights. I actually found this box, it's called Salvia. It's a, it's a plant that you can buy in any nursery or even, I bought this one at Winco. It's in the mint family and the YouTube videos, there are 60 of them that are teaching our children how to smoke this plant. It produces a hallucinogenic effect and I believe you, Supervisor Montgomery, has already viewed one of them. You lose total consciousness of reality. Dr. Phil has done a show on it stating that it is addictive, that it is a hallucinogenic and that it does burn brain cells. Well, people have been, when I've tried to go out there and talk to nurseries and stuff, their answer to me was, "What were you doing in the 60s?" Well, I was eight years old and I didn't have a really good heroin connection at that time. And I think it's, it's my obligation as an adult now that I, I am not a kid no more and I don't like people saying, "What were you doing when you were a kid?" That's a ridiculous statement. We have a responsibility to protect our children, my children, your children and everybody's children that live in this community. And it's already banned under, I researched it on Wikipedia, it's already banned in several U.S. states. It, it does say, it mentioned it, it is a hallucinogenic and I think if we make enough noise in this county, we can get rid of it out of our state. I don't want this going in the paper and telling people, "Hey, we're, we're selling Salvia here so your children or your grandchildren can get a hold of this." The very idea that I work for Cheech and Chong dot com and Tommy Chong went to jail for, for the word bong, but on YouTube, it's perfectly all right to teach your children how to smoke it. If you watch these YouTube videos and just type in Salvia, you'll see that ranging from, I've seen people from 14 to 70 years old trying this on YouTube and they lose total consciousness. I've met every expert in the world from age 14 to age 25 on YouTube. They all know why that I'm the idiot because they stated it back to me when I commented on YouTube. I believe if we have some kind of an attorney look up the First Amendment rights, that you're not allowed to yell "fire" in a crowded theater and I think this is the same thing. You are hurting individuals, you are causing brain damage and you are teaching kids to do what the Sheriff's Department, they're sitting right here, they know they've been trying to fight this for 40 years, these types of drugs. I mean, we've had people licking frog's backs to perform, to get the psilocybin off their backs. How many more drugs do we need to try and kill our kids and I certainly don't want my child end up in prison for life for killing your child?
Thank you. If you'd leave that information, I would be interested maybe looking at this in conjunction with Supervisor Montgomery to see if there is actually something we could do along with our Sheriff's Department.
Thank you very much.
But thank you for bringing that to our attention. Any other public comment?
Good morning. My name is Rosemary Freeborn. I'm a state humane officer for Friends of Placer County Animal Shelter. And after four years of asking this board to resolve the issues at Animal Control without a response and after two years in Miller's bogus animal advisory committee meeting without improvements and the last but not least, after Rockholm's email message to Miller that inadvertently came to me, I've decided that it's not this board who's going to clean up their own stink hole. It's going to be the voters who demand responsible and honest representation. That ultimately will change the dynamics of this governing body. To that end, I have pre-recorded problem number two at Animal Control and I'm posting it on the public airwaves. Animal Control has long ignored the laws of the state, but in Placer County, I'm afraid this is business as usual overall. I'm asking the clerk to put a copy of these transcripts along with Rockholm's email message in the public meeting. Minus, thank you.
Any other public comment?
Good morning. My name is Bill Carpenter, Senior, Auburn. I'm new to the community and just came to the community in June and enjoying it very much, I'd like to say. However, I have a few issues. One, in the jurisdiction that I came from, supervisors' meetings were held in the evening where the general public really had a chance to come to address you. So I thought that was one issue that I was, I was concerned about. Oh, and another one is, as you can tell, I'm an older individual and sometimes the audio is not loud enough for me to really hear what's really going on. I'd appreciate if, if that could be increased. The other issue is, in a personal incident, a, my son is in business in, in the area and he's had an issue contacting the Board of Supervisors and having response. And I would imagine that the, one of the duties of the board is that, that the supervisor in question would respond to any inquiries, voicemails or whatever in a timely manner. And that, that's a situation that, that I'd like to, like to have addressed, whoever the citizen is. The other situation is websites and that's email. Now, I looked on, across the website to find email addresses or whatever and I have to dig sometimes the second or third page in order to find it. And I think the email address or contact information should be on the first page of whichever supervisor's page that is in order that the citizen or the, a person interested could immediately find it. I also had another situation with the Sheriff's Department website and the same thing. Their 411, obviously, a 911 is obviously there, which is appropriate and, and as it should be. However, the, the non-emergency numbers are not there. There again, I had to dig for that. There was a helicopter flying around over my place and I wanted to find out what's going on, I'm on the website and I had to dig around to find the, the non-contact number and I noticed that there's a, the non-emergency contact number and I noticed that there is one for the Placer Tahoe area and, and the Auburn area. And I would like to recommend that, that those website addresses or contact information, phone numbers be on the front page. So when, as soon as you pull it up, bingo, there it is and we can, we can contact you. Thank you very much.
We're Dennis at Carolyn Luchey and we live in Lincoln. We're here, we spoke a couple months ago on postpartum depression and probably as most of the people realize that our daughter not only attempted her own life, but also she took the life of her child. Just to give you an idea now, right now, she is in Napa State Hospital. She was placed there on Wednesday of last week. But we're here to mention the Postpartum Depression Conference, which is going to be held on May 14th at the Lutheran Church on Douglas in, in Granite Bay. There's some brochures that I think each of you will receive or if you have received them. We're here to cordially invite not only you individually, but if you wanted to just come, even just for a couple hours to hear some of the speakers. We have quite noticeable speakers in the, from Pac Inman and Shoshana Bennett psychiatrists in the field and have written many books on postpartum depression. And then also Jane Hockaman, the founder of Postpartum Support International, will be also a speaker in how to develop a program for Placer County. Placer County Mental Health, by the way, has just been so cordial in moving to have someone in place to address postpartum difficulties for mothers and their, and fathers, even grandparents like ourselves. And we're just strong advocates that we don't want to see another child or parents or grandparents go through what we have gone through in the last 14 months with our daughter and the difficulties, you know, of just being put in a jail and then you have to have a hearing and then finally a, a commitment. But you're sure cordially invited. This is both for laymen and professional people in the community. There's a website on the brochure and so forth and we would just appreciate, and we do appreciate your support for not only listening, but having the recognition that this is a serious problem of mental health and it needs, it's something that's not always spoken about. And we just think this is a very good start with this conference. Thank you very much.
Thank you and thank you for bringing that to us again and reminding us of it.
Yes, thank you.
Any other public comment?
Hi, I'm Terri Martinez and I'm to back up Dennis Luchey and tell you really how getting the word out is really very, very important. I had a daycare for 16 years and when this happened, my daughter was Christina's best friend. And I, when that happened to Christina, I cannot tell you the parents, that I see them every single day, never had mentioned a word, came and told me the horror stories that they had gone through and things that they wanted to do to their child. And I saw them every day and never knew that. So I, I really believe in this event. I believe that getting it out to everyone is so, so very important. And in fact, had I got it as a daycare provider through the years, Christina had even worked for me, she would have had the information herself. So I am just such an advocate of going out there and I'm in the community now as a realtor and spreading the word everywhere and had my office even forward that to everyone because I believe getting the word, informing people is so, so very important. It will save a life someday. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, seeing none, I will close public comment. Supervisors' reports? Jim?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to report that I attended the regional rural county, Regional Council of Rural Counties last week and wanted to speak on, on the AB 885 issue. Many know, many know that Mr. Gaines has a, in this, in the Assembly, has an issue in the Assembly and Mr. Loeb from Yuba City, also Allison Huber from Eldorado County also has some legislation proposed. The staff of RCRC, working in conjunction with the California Environmental Health Directors' Association, is working closely with the Department of Water Resources in order to change the, the AB 885 so it removes much of the redundancy out of that. So that's where we're moving at this time. We don't know if Mr. Gaines' legislation will even come out of committee because it's a Republican, democratically dominated committee. So anyhow, we're moving forward from RCRC perspective to make that more, less onerous. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I just have a, a quick report. Last week at the Sacramento Area Council of Government Meeting, SECOG, an issue came up where a city and a county, and the county of Sacramento were having a dispute over regional housing numbers and a possible annexation of a piece of land. And the bone of the contention was the city only wanted to take 37 of the units assigned to that area and the county was already, had their plan approved with 199 units. Well, we didn't resolve it, it was voted down and so now they're going to have to go back and work that out. But it could have, it could come, it could come to this county and we could be involved in something like that with, with the cities. And so anyway, I just wanted to report it. Thank you.
Consent agenda.
Move approval on consent.
Second.
Roll call.
Euler?
Aye.
Wykan?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Montgomery?
Yes.
Rockholm.
Yes. Now we have a presentation that Supervisor Euler is going to make, a proclamation for the Child Abuse Prevention Month in Placer County.
Pardon me, Ms. Chairman. Well, apropos of some of the comments that we just heard in public comment, April is, I'm requesting that, that our board officially recognize April as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Placer County. We, of course, are very well-served here in Placer County by the Placer County Child Abuse Prevention Council, headed up by Deanne Thornton. Her organization, of course, I'm just going to briefly read their statement of purpose, "To better integrate child abuse services within Placer County and to develop and promote beneficial working relationships among those professionals responsible for the provision of services to abused children and their families, increase community and local government awareness of the problems of child abuse and encourage support for the work and goals of the organization. Develop and promote local education and training opportunities for professionals and laypersons' involvement in preventing and intervening in child abuse. Encourage and support the creation of coordinated, community-based prevention and intervention services for at-risk and abused children and to advocate for child welfare services throughout Placer County." Later this week, Friday afternoon, several of us, I believe, will be attending their 20th, 20th Annual Luncheon in, in recognition of their efforts and their mission. And so that was why I requested that this proclamation be on this agenda so that it can be formally presented to them at their luncheon. And I will read, avoiding the repetition of the whereas's, read the, the proclamation. The first whereas will be there. "Whereas, one of our greatest resources is our children and our future will be determined by their innovative ideas, talents and leadership and presenting, preventing child abuse and neglect is a community problem that depends on the involvement of all citizens. And when children grow and develop in a safe, caring and nurturing home environment, they are more likely to succeed as adults and make a positive impact in our community. And children, child maltreatment occurs when parents or other caregivers find themselves in stressful situations without community resources and do not know how to cope or access those resources. And we can fulfill our duty to ensure that every child in our community has a safe and healthy upbringing by working together to prevent child abuse," pardon me, "and scientific studies have confirmed a direct link between child abuse and a significantly, significantly greater risk later in life for divorce, substance abuse, crime, suicide, heart disease, obesity and other crisis situations. And the estimated annual cost of child abuse and neglect in this county is 103.8," country, I'm sorry, that number didn't look right. "Country is $103.8 billion associated with child protection, law enforcement, health and mental health treatment, courts and special education, according to a 2007 study conducted by Prevent Child Abuse America. And child abuse and neglect can be reduced by making sure each family has the support they need to raise their children in a healthy environment. And the Child Abuse Prevention Council of Placer County has partnered with government, social service, medical personnel, nonprofit organizations, schools, faith communities, civic organizations, law enforcement agencies and the business community to develop and sustain effective programs to ensure every child lives in a safe, healthy and nurturing home. And this year, 2009, marks the 20-year anniversary for the Child Abuse Prevention Council of Placer County and their leading efforts to raise awareness about child abuse, educate the community and help thousands of families resolve difficult life circumstances that threaten the safety and well-being of children. Now therefore let it be known that the Placer County Board of Supervisors designates April 2009 as Child Abuse Prevention Month, reaffirms its dedication to preventing child abuse and protecting our community's children and be it further proclaimed that the board calls upon the citizens to increase the participation in efforts to support families thereby providing child abuse and, child abuse and strengthening, preventing, excuse me, child abuse and strengthening the communities in which we live." Just a couple of quick statistics in terms of, of numbers served. The organization in its, in its history has provided service, over the past two decades has provided service to over 75,000 childrens and, children and families that have participated in any of their various programs. Pretty astounding number. The other number that I thought was astounding and a bit disturbing, but, but just reinforces why I'm so glad an organization like this exists is that with the, I'm, perhaps I shouldn't extrapolate, but I would, I would assume that with the downturn in the economy, that might be one of the reasons why the Child Abuse Prevention Council of Placer County has experienced a 60%, 66% increase in requests for services in the first half of this fiscal year. So glad they're there, glad to be supportive and a partner with them. I know our entire board looks for any opportunity that, that we can to help you fulfill your mission and, you know, Deanne, we love you, but our goal is to put you out of work. So thank you for your effort and your commitment if you're coming up.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you all. I'd like to recognize Board Member Tammy Euler, Under Sheriff Bell in the back, Past President Sheriff Ed Bonner and Past President Rich Colwell for being here this morning. So thank you all. I do want to retire, I told Supervisor Euler that, so thank you. I appreciate your help and your support. The good news is this morning I don't have a PowerPoint. But I'd like to say our 20 years of prevention wouldn't be possible without your support over the years. The extraordinary leadership of Placer County, the Board of Supervisors, all of you here today, Dr. Burton, Richard Keneck and many others have played a role in supporting our work. So I would like to thank all of you for understanding the value of prevention and it really is paying off. We are seeing success in thousands of families in Placer County every day, every year. So thank you for understanding and investing in prevention and for putting kids first. Thank you so much.
[applause]
Ann, can I see that email supposedly I sent?
Go ahead. If I might, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to add all the great things that were said about the council as well as Placer County Department of Health and Human Services. You know, oftentimes, good news goes unreported and you can see what's often reported in the Sacramento Bee about the trials and tribulations in Sacramento County, which is, you know, nothing to crow about in terms of our good fortune, but it's because of the efforts of our Health and Human Services and this council that our citizens are well-treated, our children are taken care of. It takes these kind of coordinated efforts. And you'll note that these organizations, working hand in hand, take care of these kids, keep these issues out of print because they're so well-handled and it does speak well about the, our citizenry and the services that we provide as a county.
Thank you. Kirk?
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
Okay. All right. We're early for the next item, so let's take up item number four.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm Jim Bogan, the purchasing manager. Item 4A is requesting your board's approval to renew competitively awarded blanket purchase order number 15536 with Kent's Oil Services for Asphalt Emulsion, delivered and spread at the exact same price as the previous BPO. In this contract, we have an adjustment mechanism so that during the construction period, we'll actually adjust the price of emulsion twice based on the PPI and based on the contractor's price for the emulsion so that we ensure that we have a fair price for both the county and for the contractor. Therefore, we request your approval to renew this blanket purchase order in the maximum amount of $300,000 for this coming construction season.
Kirk?
Well, if there aren't any questions, I move approval.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
We won't have enough time to do that, we have one at 9:30. So do number six? Can we do six real quick?
Sure.
Fees?
Will Dickinson, Deputy Director, Department of Facility Services. This morning, we're requesting that your board approve a reduction in the franchise fee charged to garbage collection, garbage collection customers in franchise areas two and three from 5% to 4%. These fees are collected by Tahoe Truckee disposal and remitted to the county for the monitoring and maintenance of closed landfills, administration of collection service contracts and the management of education and outreach programs. Reducing this fee will reduce revenue to the Solid Waste Management Enterprise Fund by approximately $70,000 per year. That is a reduction that we can afford at this time and we're happy to be able to pass that savings back on to the garbage collection customers. This action will help us keep garbage collection fees to the Tahoe area customers as low as possible. As a side note, there will be no increases this year to garbage collection fees in franchise areas one and four, which include Forest Hill, Meta Vista, North Auburn and other unincorporated areas in western Placer County. Thank you and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions? Jennifer?
I just wanted to, to, to thank you for that presentation in our packet. I think it's really important that you brought up the fact that even with this reduction, which is a great thing, I'm all for taxpayers paying less money, we'll still be maintaining adequate funding to operate, monitor and maintain the existing facilities. And the next part's the really important part, with reasonable contingency for unexpected occurrences. And I was just really pleased to see that in there because I do think we need to be forward-looking and I want to congratulate you and your department and Truckee Tahoe Sanitation District, or TSD, COINC, whatever I pay my check to each month, for thinking about the long-term health of the, of the district as well as the, the short term.
Thank you. Bert?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. So to, to what do you attribute our ability to actually reduce the cost of providing services?
Well, for a number of years, when I first started here, 18 years ago, we, we had fairly low reserves and we had some pretty significant li, potential liabilities out there. We had three landfills that were closed or in the process of being closed, but there was always the potential for new regulations or some other factor to cause an environmental problem that we would have to take care of. So our goal has always been to increase the reserves for those, for that budget. In case there was a major problem, we could pay for it without having to, to be in some kind of crisis situation. So over the years, we've been able to put away quite a bit of money in reserves and we get quite a bit of revenue now from, from the interest on those reserves. So that actually carries us forward quite nicely in our budget and, and that has allowed us both on, in both sides of the hill to lower the, the fees. When I first started here, they were at 15% on the western side. Now we have them down to 8%. So we're hoping to be able to continue that in the future.
Thank you. Ms. Chairman, I think you're just illustrative of the long history and, and this board's approach at, at taking a long-term look at our facilities financing, how we, how we build our reserves, how we protect our reserves and how our reserves have effectively been utilized by this county to av- been utilized by this county to avoid a, a whipsaw approach where we are constantly having to react to things outside of our control, whether it be, um, legislative mandate that, that hits us as it relates to how we operate a facility, or a downturn in the economy. This board has a long history of, of establishing and prudently managing reserves, and I think that this, uh, this reduction in a, in a service fee is, is illustrative of, of how this board has managed, and how the CEO's office has managed, uh, our, our money in that regard.
Thank you. Do you have a motion?
I'd like to move that we, uh, adopt the ordinance amending section 816470 of the Placer County Code to reduce the franchise fee in garbage collection franchise areas two and three from five percent to four percent, effective July 1, 2009.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, we'll pick up the nine-thirty item.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Very briefly, Lauren Clark with the Planning Department here to introduce Alex Fish, who will discuss the matter today, which is a request by a property owner, Eric Hammond, who is owner of certain properties encumbered by a Williamson Act contract, agricultural preserve number 546, and it's a request to, uh, consider a resolution for a boundary line adjustment within the boundaries of that contract. So with that, we'll turn it over to Alex.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. No need for the introduction on my part at this point. As Lauren had, um, described, Mr. Hammond, uh, is the owner of a property that is enrolled in the Williamson Act, agricultural preserve 546, uh, is one parcel, ninety-nine acres in total. He also owns a contiguous nine-point-one acre parcel to the southeast of that, uh, that is not enrolled in the Williamson Act. The issue at hand is that Mr. Hammond, uh, wishes to do a boundary line adjustment between, uh, the preserve parcel and the non-preserve parcel, uh, in order to reconfigure the boundaries of the properties, which necessitates, uh, reconfiguration of the boundaries of the preserve. Uh, the reason for that, you have, uh, should have two full-color copy slides in your packet that I think tell the story rather well. Baxter Grade Road comes through and bisacks each of the properties such that portions of each property are on the south side of the road and portions are on the north. The reconfiguration would allow, uh, would place the properties such that each property is entirely on the south side of the road, the other property entirely on the north. Staff reviewed this request and presented its findings to the Agricultural Commission, uh, a couple of months back, and, uh, found that the new contract would comply with section 51257 of the William, Williamson Act, which governs minor boundary line adjustments, and in short, that the, uh, a new contract would be executed to enforcefully restrict the preserve for, uh, a minimum term of ten years. There's no net decrease in the area of the preserve. Um, at least ninety percent of the land under contract will, uh, under current contract will remain under the new contract. Uh, the lot line adjustment would not compromise the, uh, agricultural productivity of the preserve, and that the lot line adjustment does not result in a greater number of developable parcels. Um, the Agricultural Commission concurred with staff's, uh, analysis that this request meets with all those requirements and unanimously passed motion eight to zero, uh, to recommend that your board approve this request. We do have, uh, one letter that we've received from the Nevada Irrigation District, which just simply specifies, uh, service restrictions on the two properties involved, really doesn't have any, uh, bearing on the, uh, matter at hand. So with that, staff is recommending that the board take the following actions, which are to adopt the finding in support of a Class 17 categorical exemption from CEQA for this action, find that the amendment of the preserve is consistent with Placer County general plan, find that the amendment of the preserve is consistent with the requirements of the California Land Conservation Act and Placer County's administrative rules for Williamson Act lands, and lastly, approve and authorize the chair to, uh, sign the resolution and contract that are attached to this report. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them. I also have Mr. Hammond here to answer any questions if you have some for him.
Probably should, is there anyone in the audience that has any questions on this matter? The board? You're, you're good for, you're good to go.
Okay.
I'm, I'm, well, that's what I thought I was doing. I'll open, I'll, I'll open it for public comment if, uh, to open a public hearing, if anybody wishes to comment on this item. Seeing none, I'll close it. Board?
No approval.
Okay.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Do you want to do the, do the helicopter?
Yeah.
Let's take up item number five.
Chairman Rockholm, members of the board, I'd like to continue with the good news of the day. I also do not have a PowerPoint. What we're going to do today is, uh, request that your board provide policy direction with respect to the following actions. Determine the preferred approach towards final acquisition and funding of the new helicopter for the Sheriff's Department Aviation Program, including A, the full funding approach for the capital acquisition costs, and B, the full funding approach for the ongoing operational costs. Secondly, direct staff to complete the task necessary to implement the selected funding approach. Return to your board at its April 7th meeting for final review and approval. I will be presenting the background. Sheriff Bonner will be providing comments, and then Treasurer-Tax Collector Janine Windenhausen and Assistant CEO Holly Heinzan will provide fiscal and budgetary information for you. As far as background, on January 23rd, 2007, based upon the information contained in the detailed feasibility study, your board approved a series of recommendations related to the purchase of the new helicopter. At that time, sufficient funding was set aside to allow for the ordering of the base helicopter, but funding had yet to be provided for the provision of the required mission equipment and to projected increase in operational costs. Your board's approvals included a series of directives to the Sheriff's Department to pursue funding sources to fully account for identified gaps in the one-time capital and ongoing operational expenses. The Sheriff's Department and the County Executive Office were directed to develop a full funding approach related to increased cost, to the increased cost to support the acquisition, outfitting, and operation of the helicopter. On February 24th, 2009, your board received an update on the current status of the helicopter acquisition and requested clarification on several issues. Since then, the County Executive Office has met with the sheriff to generate responses relative to the funding and operational issues, and with the County Treasurer-Tax Collector relative to financing options. So briefly, these issues included, related to the one-time funding and the potential gap there. The one-time capital costs for both the, for both the base helicopter and the mission equipment, identified by the Sheriff's Department, had risen from three million, four-hundred-and-thirty-eight-thousand dollars, identified in the original board memo, to four million dollars, an increase of five-hundred-and-sixty-two-thousand dollars. As the amount set aside for the capital expenditures was two-point-five million, a potential one-time expenditure gap of one-point-five million dollars existed. In response, according to Sheriff Ed Bonner, the United Auburn Indian Tribe has agreed to pay one million dollars towards the purchase of the helicopter in lease purchase payments over the period of time of the lease entered into by the county. The first lease payment is expected to be due approximately one year from the actual purchase of the helicopter. The tribe also has indicated a desire to have other jurisdictions within the county that will benefit, uh, to assist financially in the purchase and/or ongoing operations of the helicopter. Based on discussions with tribal management, Sheriff Bonner has indicated that the planned contributions listed below will satisfy that request from the tribe. A, the provision of flight officers from the city of Roseville, cities of Roseville and Rockland; B, the donation of land and engineering services for the construction of a new landing pad from the city of Auburn; and C, the potential donated construction of the landing pad from a local building firm. Also, according to Sheriff Bonner, once the new helicopter is delivered and operational, the old helicopter will be sold. The proceeds from the sale, estimated to range between four-hundred thousand and six-hundred thousand, will be applied to cover the lease payments in excess of the tribe's contributions. The Sheriff's Department also agreed to cover any residual amount of lease payments which are in excess of the total covered by the tribe and the proceeds from the sale of helicopter from within its existing budget resources. Sources could include grant funds, additional donations, uh, or reallocations within the sheriff's budget. Item two, related to potential increases in ongoing operational costs. The increased operational costs of the new helicopter for the same level of service were estimated by the Sheriff's Department to range from between three-hundred-and-thirty-thousand to five-hundred-and-thirty-thousand a year. No new funding sources had been identified to cover this potential additional expenditure. However, according to Sheriff Bonner, the department is willing to operate the helicopter program within its existing FY-0910 proposed budget through the, the reduction of service levels in combination with other cost-saving measures related to the program. All operational costs associated with the helicopter program will be covered completely within the currently proposed FY-0910 sheriff's budget. The third item relates to a clarification of the fire suppression aspects of the helicopter's mission. At the February 24th meeting, staff reported that neither the U.S. Forest Service nor Cal Fire had shown a willingness to enter into reimbursement agreements with the county. After further review and analysis, including the reluctance of the U.S. Forest Service and Cal Fire to enter into reimbursements agreements during these challenging fiscal times, and the required investment in, in training hours to support the fire suppression activity, Sheriff Bonner has indicated that the new helicopter will be focused on its law enforcement mission. The Bambi bucket will not be installed as part of the initial mission equipment, but may be considered at a later date. The helicopter, however, will be offered to the U.S. Forest Service and Cal Fire as backup for administrative support during extreme fire situations. The last item relates to budgeting and financing options. In February, your board, uh, three options were presented for your board's consideration as follows. Number one, fulfill the contractual obligation for the purchase of the base helicopter and resell it to another agency. Number two, fulfill the contract obligation for the purchase of the base helicopter, defer the purchase of the mission equipment and its placement in operations until an agreement to sell the existing helicopters secured, the remainder of the capital shortfall is absorbed by the Sheriff's Department from non-general fund sources, and then also to direct that the anticipated increased operating expenses be absorbed by the sheriff's budget. And then three, accept the delivery of the helicopter and fund the one-time expenditure gap with a temporary loan from the, uh, general fund resources. The other conditions as far as ongoing operational expenses were included in this recommendation as well. After discussion, your board asked for development of additional options related to the leasing of the helicopter over a series of years, and approaches including both private and, um, Placer County treasury financing options. These additional options were presented by the Treasurer-Tax Collector, Janine Windenhausen, and as I indicated, Assistant County Executive Officer Holly Heinzan. With that, I would like to, uh, if you have no questions, turn the program to Sheriff Bonner.
Any questions? No?
Morning. It's good to be here. I am, uh, actually very delighted to be here to, uh, discuss an option that wasn't presented last time, the, the possibility of leasing the helicopter, and my wife wants a new truck. We don't have enough cash to buy a new truck, but we think we can get it leased, have payments that we can meet, even if I don't get my raise next year, which is very possible. But we can meet, we can meet the payment. So, I want to thank you again for allowing us to come back, and I want to thank the staff for what you're about to hear, because there are options. And, quite frankly, they're a lot smarter than I am. And I'm going to let them make the recommendations for you to discuss and talk about. What I want to do, though, I do want to take a few minutes, you know, I, I made my pitch last, last time, which is why I think we need this. I want to kind of just reaffirm some things. First off, I want to frame my, my thoughts with you. Sergeant Mark Dunneken, Officer John Hague, Sergeant Daniel Sakai, Sergeant Irvin Romans, were the four Oakland police officers that killed in the line of duty, killed in the line of duty. And I want to tell you something about, something I love, and admire and respect about deputy sheriffs, police officers, highway patrolmen, firefighters. Your gunshots, most of us sane people turn around and run away. These men and women run to them. I had, um, had a friend of mine writes a little article in the Auburn Journal, in a local newspaper, and he said the helicopter was a toy. Now, this is a toy. Seriously, this is a toy car. I drive it, goes off the edge and nothing happens. Nobody gets hurt. I'm not asking for a toy. I'm asking for a tool. An incredibly complex, sophisticated, and dangerous tool that I believe will make the police officer, the public safety officer, that you and I send out in harm's way every day safer, and I do believe that it'll make, it will save lives, uh, from people that need help up in the mountains. That's what I'm here about. I really thank you for the opportunity to come back to you again with financing options that, again, the, the work that's been done is, is phenomenal. I think it's realistic. I think it allows us to meet that goal, and I, I hope you agree. And really, without any further ado, I'm going to turn it back over to those people. And, and by the way, at, at the end of this, we do have staff available. If you have any operational questions, or we can clarify anything, we can, but I, I thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I have some questions. Yes. Mr. Sheriff, maybe Rich can answer. On page thirty-three, the, says the cities of Roseville and Rockland are going to provide flight officers. How is that going to work?
Well, what they have done in the past, and what we expect to do in a greater, uh, magnitude, they would be the second seat, they would be an additional officer in the helicopter with us. Uh, so it would reduce our personnel cost, is, is the hope, and, uh, they would be trained, operating all the very sophisticated equipment, but they would go up on a regular basis and be part of the team. And I think that obviously helps, number one, in, in our ability to help protect officers and citizens in the communities that we serve, all the communities we serve. We have somebody who has greater knowledge of the streets and the communities, so, but that is our hope, is that they will be able to supply ongoing supportive personnel.
So when the helicopter is needed, where are these flight officers going to be? Are they going to be at the hangar waiting for a call, or do you have to go to Roseville?
Well, in, as I understand some of the options, there'll be somewhat reduced flight because of lease obligations, so we will have more scheduled time, we'll be, we'll be available to respond. We will have our own flight officers, too. In an emergency, we'll have people up as soon as we can, but I think that we will take a very hard look and, I think, address the issues very intelligently, you know, figuring out when those peak times are, when historically there are calls for service that the helicopter can be of use for in the patrol mission.
But they won't be stopped at the hangar at any time, then? They'll be there wherever jurisdiction they're at?
They, they will have an assigned day or two, you know, so we, if it's a Thursday, it could be a Rockland police officer that's up in the aircraft, so he or she would actually come up to the hangar, that would be their assignment. If we're, if we're doing other things, they may not fly that day, but, uh, yeah, on, on those given days, that body would, that person would come up to the hangar and work with the team.
And the jurisdictions will pick up the cost for those?
Yes.
Officers. And then, is, in regards of selling the old helicopter, in light of the financial difficulty throughout the state and the nation, and businesses going out of business, what's the likelihood of actually selling the old helicopter? I don't see that as a feasible.
I think it's pretty good, Jim. I really do. I think that, uh, you know, it is, it's like, what's, what's the market for used car right now? It's pretty good, you know, people are looking at used vehicles. This is an old helicopter. I mean, gosh, it's almost as old as you and I.
Certainly not.
But, but the other thing, it's still serviceable. I know we've had some inquiries from a couple of sheriffs- I know we've had some inquiries from a couple of sheriff's departments, and actually, for a patrol mission, you know, it's well-suited. It isn't suited for working in the mountains or pulling someone out of a canyon, as we've seen recently with the highway patrol helicopter and its abilities. So I think that, I think it's a pretty good opportunity for us, and I think it will sell.
Any other questions? Jennifer?
I'd actually just like to follow up on an issue that Jim raised, because that was a real concern of mine, as you know, can we actually sell the old thing? And I had the opportunity last week, I believe it was just last week, it seems longer, to go out and actually fly in the helicopter. And that was one of the questions that I raised with the sergeant and also with the deputy on duty out there. And one of the things that was made clear to me is that while the old helicopter may not suit our needs, there are other departments and other public agencies whose needs it will suit, who don't need to lift people out of canyons, but, you know, possibly maybe follow cars fleeing down a freeway, for example. So my mind was put a bit to rest about that element of the question, and I just wanted to, you know, put that out there, that the argument was made, and it made some sense to me, that there are other agencies who would have a purpose for a helicopter that we no longer have a purpose for. On the topic of the helicopter and selling it, we have a rough value that we think the helicopter is worth today. And if you could just clarify a little bit on why do we, why do we believe the helicopter is worth that? Is it just because the helicopter's worth that, or is it the parts and the equipment that are, would be included with the sale?
Yeah, this is where I would probably punt.
Okay.
Chuck, you want to come forward? Chuck Peterson, who's been with us, and we're going to have him address. He's been just an integral part. A lot of the data that has gone to the county exec's office on operational issues has come from him.
Thank you.
You heard the question?
Yes, indeed. The first thing that we did is we had the helicopter professionally appraised. We did not, it's not a number that we picked out of the air. Rice Aviation Services out at Marysville is an outfit that buys and sells surplus military helicopters all over the world. So they gave us a very thoughtful and complete assessment of the value of the helicopter, which also includes the value of all the spare parts that we've accumulated over time. There are some issues with the mission equipment, because some of that is, some of it is been purchased by grants fees, so we may have to either get, well, we're working on getting permission to transfer it to another law enforcement agency, particularly within the state, but we may have to turn that in. However, the value, the residual value of the helicopter and the parts that we have, including extra rotor blades, which are very expensive, and other things, make the cost very, very reasonable. Also, the fact that we have checked and there are sources that we can use to sell that helicopter. We belong, as do most, all the law enforcement agencies that have an air unit, to something called the Airborne Law Enforcement Association, which is a close network of people that is well-aware of what's going on in the business, and it's a good source to find buyers, and these are people from all over the country that belong to this. And finally, there's a website that we've used before to sell surplus equipment. It's called Government Assets For Sale, and it's actually an online auction house, and we've used that to sell helicopters that were no longer of use to us in the past that were surplus. So there are many, many ways that we can solve this problem, and I hope that, does that answer your question?
Well, I'd just like to follow up a little bit for a clarification. On the rotor blades, the value in those is that we haven't used them as many hours as their lifetime would.
It's an additional set of rotor blades that we have, and that are not new, but they have left in them.
But the value of the helicopter, and when we talk about selling the old helicopter, I'm just assuming we're going to throw all the old parts in with it, because we aren't going to need those anymore.
Correct.
The value to, to a certain extent at least, is in the fact that we have not hit the maximum number of hours, either on the rotor or on the engine. Is that correct? So would it be our intent, then, since we have those low flying hours on that, to, if we do bring in the new helicopter, mothball the old helicopter to retain its value as it sits today?
Well, once we get the new helicopter, there's a little bit more in the process before it becomes operational. It has to go through a completion process. We're buying a partially equipped helicopter from American Aerocopter. It will then go to a completion contractor, where it will take four to five months. During that period, we need to keep the current helicopter in operation, but once the new helicopter is fully operational, we're then in a position to sell it.
And at that time, after that four or five-month equipment and training period, would it be our intent as a department to mothball, for lack of a better term, the old helicopter, to preserve its value at whatever date that is?
Well, our thought would be to sell it, you know, to recoup the, that's exactly what we want to do, and we would only hold off getting rid of it until the new one was ready, and at that point, we would dispose of it as quickly as possible to have those funds available for the, whatever payment plan.
I think the answer is yes.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
No, 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 don't go yet. Don't go till I-
Thank you.
Jim, I just need some clarification. Are you under contract with the sheriff's department, or do you represent a different-
Oh, I'm a part-time contract employee of the sheriff's department. I have a background in aviation, in business, in the civilian world, and so they've retained me to help them with this project. And I've been working on it since October of two thousand and four, as a matter of fact.
Oh, sorry. Okay. Thank you.
At this point, again, I appreciate your questions. We will be around, after you hear about the financing options, for any other operational questions. But with that, I'm going to turn it back over to Rich, and thank you.
Treasurer tax collector, Janine Windenhousen, will address the board at this point.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I don't actually have a PowerPoint presentation, but some spreadsheets for reference to, easy to follow. I have collected some information and done some analysis based on input, based on direction that I've heard from the board and input from the county executive's office. All of you have this in your board packet, and this shows a number of options. I don't want to belabor this and go into great detail, other than to say that we looked at three main alternatives and then some further alternatives under those alternatives. One is for the county to issue debt. And in that alternative, what I'd like to point out is that the amount that has to be financed is significantly greater than the other alternatives, because outside debt of this type for this kind of financing with a third party requires that the county set aside a reserve fund to ensure payment of the debt service. And so there is a significant amount in addition to the amount of the helicopter purchase price that would have to be financed. The next option was looking at leases with a third-party lease vendor, and then a number of options were developed under doing a financing through the treasury. So apart from the reserve fund requirement, the next kind of decision point has to do with the interest rates, and as you can see, we have the ability through the treasury to offer much more attractive rates. I want to point out that these rates are as of early this month, and they may have changed slightly, and final rate will be determined when we approve documents if your board decides to do a financing. The next slide, the next slide shows an analysis of some selected financings. And the financing alternative number one, and that corresponds with your board memo, which was identified as number one, is financing for seven years and financing one-point-five million. That one-point-five million represents the funding shortfall. If you were to purchase the helicopter outright today, you would still need another one-point-five million dollars to purchase it outright today. The next option is to finance the entire helicopter for a seven-year period or the entire helicopter for a twelve-year period. This table is not summative. It is basically an aggregation of a variety of statistical information. What I'd like to point out is that between alternative one and two, the dollar difference over the seven-year period is a hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars. The dollar difference between alternative two A and two B is two-hundred-and-sixty-six thousand dollars. I have noted, for your information, the net present value that that means, in other words, in today's dollars, over the twelve-year or seven-year financing. We did not compare one and two B. It's a little bit more difficult to do an apples-to-apples comparison on that, because you're financing different amounts and different terms, and quite frankly, I think some of the information is pretty obvious. So I would say that in terms of your options, when you're talking about a hundred and fifty-seven or two-hundred-and-sixty-six thousand dollars over a seven-to-twelve-year period, they're not significant, and other factors may come into play in your decision on your option, like the size of your debt service payment. And this is the amount that would need to be appropriated in your budget. And then the United Auburn Indian Community has made a commitment to contribute over the life of the lease, a million dollars. And that, those contributions are calculated simply by taking their million-dollar contribution and dividing it either by a seven-year lease or a twelve-year lease, and then subtracting that out to come up with the net annual obligation that would be required. There's other information in here about if you leave the two-point-five million dollars invested, if you decide to finance the whole amount, what those investment earnings would be, and how they would net against the financing costs. And at the bottom, the differences, the total financing costs are reflected. What that means in each, in each one of these scenarios, what happened was that if you take the two-point-five million dollars and invest it, or in the case of the one-point-five million, you would be making a two-point-five million dollar down payment, but for assumption purposes, I put in that the old helicopter would be sold for a half a million dollars in about nine months, giving the sheriff about a nine-month time period from today to sell that helicopter, and that amount would be invested. It would earn interest, and then the debt service would be drawn from those funds that were invested. And what happens is that you have the money to make the debt service payments out of the balances on deposit from the two-point-five million plus the helicopter or just the helicopter in option one, except for the last debt service payment would be short. And the amount that the last debt service would be, payment would be short is reflected in line twelve. And so with that, I can answer any questions that you have about your funding options and what you might like to do.
Robert?
Janine, first of all, thanks for all the work that you've done. Now that I think about it, actually, over fourteen years, this is, there've been several occasions where you bailed me out on different decisions, so I appreciate that. But the question I have, actually, is if I understand the chart and what you just showed properly in the staff report, the payments of eighty-nine thousand dollars under the seven-year lease, where we use all of the reserves to go towards the upfront purchase, as well as if we don't do that and hold the two-point-five million dollars back in reserves, both of those lease payment calculations are without including the decrease in the debt service prospectively from selling the old helicopter. Is that correct?
In all cases, I assume that the helicopter would be sold in approximately nine months for a half a million dollars, and the proceeds would be deposited to earn interest to make debt service payments.
But the eighty-nine thousand dollars, for example, that's the lease payment, assuming we didn't sell the helicopter, the old helicopter?
No, it's assuming you did. So in option number one, what would happen is that you would start off with a lease today, you would have nothing on deposit. You would go for nine months, you would get proceeds of a half a million dollars, and you would deposit that, and you would begin to earn interest on those proceeds. You would earn interest, and the interest accrues and is credited monthly, so the compounding is monthly. So you would earn interest on the half a million dollars for about three months, and then you would make your first debt service payment.
And the debt service payment would be eighty-nine thousand dollars?
And, right, your net debt service payment after the tribe's contribution would be eighty-nine thousand, so you would be reducing your half a million plus three months' interest by eighty-nine thousand dollars a year from now.
I think I understand it now. So the sale of the old helicopter was not just factored in to compute that net present value cost difference that you show up here? It was also included in the lease payments?
The net present value is inclusive, the net, the present value is inclusive of everything, all interest earnings, all debt service payments.
The sale of the old helicopter.
Sale of the old helicopter, yes.
And the lease payments also assume the sale of the old helicopter?
Yes, but the, but the lease payments are calculated separate and apart from, in other words, the lease payments are based on financing one-point-five million dollars or financing four million dollars.
So I'm still confused. So if we, let's say we sell the old helicopter for half a million dollars, just to keep the numbers simple so I can understand them, so we're financing, under the first scenario, one and a half million dollars. If we sell the old helicopter, we would really only need to finance one million dollars.
I think, I think what you-
And the lease, the lease payments are calculated, the eighty-nine thousand dollars in lease payments, are they calculated, calculated on a total debt of one-point-five or one?
At one-point-five.
Okay, that's what I-
At one-point-five. So what would happen is-
So the chart up here, the sale of the old helicopter and the earnings that you discussed, those are used predominantly to calculate the difference, which is a net present value cost-saving difference between the different alternatives.
That's right. That's right.
But not to include what the calculation on the debt service would be.
Correct. Correct. Yeah. And, you know, having said all that, I think it's really important to emphasize that these are estimates, you know, and conservatively estimated, but they are estimates, because we don't know exactly what the earnings will be if they are deposited.
Kirk?
So I think, I understand, you are not proposing any proceeds from a sale go to a reduction in principle of what was originally borrowed to fund the acquisition. You're proposing that it be deposited and interest earned on that be used for debt service payment or for the overall financing?
At this point, I'm not proposing anything.
Okay.
I am, I am showing you several different alternatives, and in the case of the four million dollars where you deposit that and earn money on it, those earnings represent the value of that money.
Mm-huh.
So if it is used to finance and pay for future debt service payments, that's what it's going to earn. If the board should say, well, we'll make an annual appropriation for lease payments, and we're going to take the two-point-five million dollars that we've set aside and go spend it out on something totally unrelated, then what the board is saying is that those interest earnings, the value of those interest earnings, the value of spending it someplace else, that's how valuable it is to us, is foregoing those interest earnings.
Right, understand. In any of these scenarios, the seven, the ten, and the twelve, is there a prohibition against unaccelerated payback?
No, there is no, no penalty or premium for early payback. So if you did pay the money back early, let's say four or five years from now, you know, you get a windfall, maybe you get a grant, something like that, you can pay it off, and as of that date, the interest will cease to accrue, calculate a payoff amount without any penalty. So in that case, your financing costs go down further.
Right.
Because you've truncated your interest.
Right, okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Jennifer?
I want to make sure I'm clear, because I thought I was until Robert and Kirk, and I just want to make sure I-
[laughing]
Thank you, gentlemen. So, if in nine months, let's take Scenario 1, just for simplicity, if in nine months we're to sell the helicopter, the one we currently own, for $500,000, can we apply that $500,000 to the million and a half that we borrow under Scenario 1? Or are you already proposing that in that scenario?
What I am proposing in this scenario is that the half a million dollars gets deposited, and it will earn interest, and you would draw on it to make debt service payments. I'm sorry, I forgot the...
Basically, really, what I'm trying to get at is, is there anything...
But could you take it and pay down? Yes, you could. And, you know, we have not, based on what the board decides today, we will go draw documents on the financing. Yeah, we can put that in the documents, that you can pay down your loan balance, you know, and probably the biggest impact that would have is, again, it depends on how we draw the documents. We can shorten the term, we can lower the annual payment.
Thank you, you answered my question, I appreciate it.
Any other questions? Thank you, Janine.
Mr. Chairman, Janine, I just want to thank you for your hard work on this. I know you've gone to bat for us several times, and I appreciate your hard work.
You're welcome.
I would echo that, thank you. Oh, now we got the lawyer down the counter.
Holly will take it now.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Yeah, these financing options, the good thing about it is you don't have any bad options. I mean, these are really good financing options for us. Any one of those three would work really well, and would be feasible and reasonable. So, I think that's an important thing to take note of. What we're balancing here is the certainty of, the certainty or the risk over the next seven to 12 years. So, with respect to a shorter financing, you've basically, a shorter time period's a little more predictable, although in these uncertain economic times, certainly, you know, we could all eat our words. But you contain some risk with respect to potential fluctuations in the market over time, competing interests on the funds that would be used for the payment, you know, and basically, with regard to our revenues, the longer timeframe and the shorter timeframe, all assume that, you know, we have those dollars available to make the payments. And, you know, it is predicated on selling the helicopter in nine months, maybe sooner, maybe later, but as Janine said, these are assumptions. So, the further the assumptions go out, and the further out we sell the helicopter, the more, the closer 1 and 2A become in terms of a net cost to the county, because we're assuming that we will earn interest to make those payments. For that reason, we would, from a county executive office standpoint, probably err on the side of more containing any risk, and two, minimizing our payments over time. So, for us, an $89,000 payment is more attractive than a $490,000 payment. And, understand that we would have interest earnings offsetting those payments, but that's also predicated on a number of assumptions, including sale of the helicopter and interest earnings. So, in terms of being on the short side of the financing, that's probably where we would want to go. But as I said, any one of these is feasible, really reasonable, and Janine did a tremendous amount of work looking at, you have the very condensed version of the options. There were, I'm sure, at least another 25 that were outlined, that you don't have the joy of seeing. So, with that, I didn't know if you were going to make some comments, Tom, or if the board had some additional discussion.
A couple of minor comments on it, well, not a minor one, but again, great appreciation to Janine, I think as Robert characterized, you know, over the past decade-plus, the ability for her to help in financing the Middle Fork Project, just one of the major things that she's done over time, these options. It's hard to argue about a 2% interest rate, 2% plus of not being whatever option. But again, we're looking at difficult times ahead, trying to minimize the long-term debt, a lot of variables in there, the seven-year one, with the likelihood of selling the helicopter, even minimize it further, but that would be a decision for your board to entertain upon that glorious day we sell the ancient helicopter and get some real cash for it. But either any of these options work, it's your preference for debt, and the board does have policies on debt that don't really touch upon this, but it does tend to advance that we tend to minimize long-term debt obligations of the county.
I'm sorry. Just kind of clarifying the term as we begin the discussion. When you say minimize the long-term debt obligation, if I take on a liability, but I have an asset in my possession that I have identified as offsetting that liability, from a net debt standpoint, we're not incurring the debt, just the same as if we would be paying cash in the first place, correct?
Yes, but that's kind of the critical factor here, is that we don't have $4 million just ready to go, so it is a...
I guess what I'm trying to do is draw a distinction between Option 1 and Option 2A or 2B. And that is that, yes, while the board's policy prudently has been to avoid encumbering additional long-term debt, when it's offset by an asset in our possession, the effect of paying cash versus financing against a deposit on hand is essentially the same in terms of the debt encumbrance. It's the difference between what we have on hand versus what it is we're going to pay, that is the debt we're adding. My thought on this is that hanging on to our cash at this particular time is the most prudent avenue, and doing so in a fashion, as we've heard, where should we encounter either an opportunity to receive additional funding from an outside source, or the financial market change to where we find ourselves in four or five years, in a position where we can accelerate payments and pay this obligation off quicker, again, that assumes that the cost of the financing isn't more than the cost of what we're earning on our savings, because I don't know why you'd be in a hurry to pay off something that was actually earning you more than you're spending for it. I just, I believe that Option 2B provides us the greatest flexibility and keeps us for the next three years, which I think reasonable foreseeable future of the next three years is, it's going to be tough. It keeps us in the best cash flow operating position with the least obligated outflow. So, that's just kind of my thinking as I look at the different scenarios.
Robert?
A couple of questions along that top process. Here's a fun question. Is it understood or assumed, or is the county's expedition versus the sheriff's, the financing cost that we're talking about, the debt service, is that going to be in the sheriff's budget?
We had discussions, especially along the line of the $89,000, if the sheriff's budget would be able to absorb that as we went through the seven-year financing. The dilemma is, again, if you look at that $400,000 plus, that would probably be difficult for the sheriff's budget to absorb on an annual basis.
But the expectation is that the $89,000 debt service would be borne within the sheriff's...
Less the proceeds of the helicopter, again, because if the helicopter is sold easy earlier, and that would be put in essentially a reserve or designated fund to pay off those, it would further decrease that amount.
Yeah, look, excuse me, I was...
That was good enough, I'm sure.
I was just going to clarify that the, just to make it clear here, that the, if indeed we financed the full amount either on 2A or 2B, the existing reserve would be retained and earn interest, and it would be spent down.
Right.
I think Tom's talking about the full obligation for the payment, not net of what we would pay out of reserves. Is that correct, Tom? I don't know if that clarified it or not.
Secondly, the status, I noticed the comments in the staff report, but the commitment from the tribe, do we have a letter of intent, or is that... I guess, I'm thinking the same kind of thoughts that Kirk gives, but I'm gravitating, as a result of that, to Option 1, and the reasons I am include the fact that we have the two and a half million dollars in reserves that's been designated. I guess a fear that I have, under the notion that, in my recollection, somebody can correct me if I'm wrong, but what the board did was agree to fund two and a half million dollars to acquire the helicopter. And so, there were a lot of other things that needed to happen, other funding sources had offered to seek out, and I know there's a commitment from the tribe, but I don't know if it's a firm commitment. And so, the question we have to ask ourselves is, you know, what could go wrong? So, if we spend the two and a half million dollars, it is a reserve that cannot now then be used for something else in light of these current budget circumstances. The agreement that I understand is that the board was supportive of committing the two and a half million dollars to acquire the helicopter, but the total cost of it then would come from and be contained within the sheriff's budget. And in current financial times, and not knowing what ramifications and other impacts on different departments we're going to have to deal with, I think the most conservative approach is to use Option 1, because those ongoing costs of $89,000 a year are numbers that I think we can all get our heads around, they're not so scary. The reserves would be committed and could not be diverted to another use, which, under financial pressure, might occur. And it still does not include the perspective even further decreasing of those payment obligations with the sale of the new helicopter, which could take them down to virtually nothing, the payments down to virtually nothing. So, I think the incentive and the total packaging of that strategy makes the most sense for me at this particular point in time.
Jim?
Thank you, Robert, for your questions about the assumptions. I hate to do this, but I want to go back to the Rockland and Roseville contributions. Is there a cap on the amount of time that their flight officers will be assigned to? Is there a monetary value to that?
Let me defer that to Sheriff Bonner, please.
I don't know. I think what it does, Jim, is how, you know, obviously, everybody's budgets are tight. How can they spring those people up? What level of participation, and then, it's the hourly rate of pay, obviously, times the number of hours. But we did actually sign a dollar amount to it, and Barbara Bassana knows that.
Barbara Bassana, Sheriff's Department. Currently, in the budget summing up that you have for the helicopter, it's estimated from $90,000 to $97,000 per year for the time that the flight officers submit. That may change if they have more hours that they apply, given this commitment that they've made.
The reason why I ask is I don't see any memorandum of understanding or action taken by city councils on our staff report, so I don't know how firm their...
It's actually, Jim, it's an ongoing commitment. We've already had flight officers from Roseville and Rockland, and, Tommy, we met last Friday with the police chiefs, they reaffirmed. We could certainly follow up and have that, but the reality is, it's been ongoing for quite some time with the helicopter program. Ebs and flows sometimes because of manpower requirements elsewhere, but...
It just seems to me that there'd be an agreement with the city councils.
I have no problem following up on that, though. You can do that.
Any other questions? Jennifer? Were you done, Jim?
Yeah.
For the time being?
I wanted to follow up with something that Robert brought up, and I think he kind of hits the nail on the head about where I'm standing on this. I've been trying to look at this in terms of value, both in terms of dollar value and financing, and value to our county. It obviously is the District 5 supervisor, the search and rescue stuff is probably going to happen most frequently in District 5, because that's where people tend to get lost. So...
Sometimes we wish they would. That's figuratively, or...
You know, so I've been kind of struggling with the cost versus utility part of this equation, and I've really come down on Robert's side, I would say, on this, in terms of looking at this potential financing, in terms of the financing offerings that are in front of us, and then, again, relating back to, you know, the original proposals we had, buy it, resell it, buy it, mothball it until we can fit it out, or buy it and loan ourselves a million and a half dollars to fit it out and start flying the darn thing. You know, I'm coming down on the side of, it's a tool, I agree with the sheriff, it's not a toy, it's a very useful tool to the county, but how do we limit taxpayer exposure in this very difficult financial time that we're facing? And I have come to believe, as apparently Robert indicated he was leaning toward, that Option 1, with the seven-year financing of the million and a half dollars, is probably the most prudent from my perspective, because it does limit the time of exposure to taxpayers, it limits the amount we're financing, but it brings a utility onboard as quickly as we can. And again, as I say, I've really struggled with this, because my, you know, my responsibility is to taxpayers in making sure that we shepherd their monies appropriately. We're buying a helicopter, whether any of us like it or not, whether you'd all like to go back and maybe change vote from the past, we're buying a helicopter. We just have to figure out the best way to do it, and the best way to represent all our constituents. And right about now, I'm, you know, I'm inclining towards Option 1, unless I hear something else up on the board today that changes my mind, but just wanted to put my two cents in on that.
Jim?
Wow. Well, you may be surprised. You may not be surprised.
I know, yeah, changed my mind.
You know, I'd like to draw the board's attention to the next item on our agenda on page 39. There's a sentence in there that I think is very pertinent to what we're talking about. It says here, "The current budgetary and service level concerns associated with the significant loss of general purpose revenues," that's property tax and sales tax, "as well as comparable reductions in public safety sales tax revenues, would suggest that in all areas practical and feasible, expenditure reduction should be implemented." So, I'm having a very hard time reconciling, on this item, we're trying to cut costs, and on this item, we're going to make the most expensive purchase of equipment in the history of Plaster County during a significant period of economic downturn. In the same time, although we're okay this year and possibly next year, the possibility of layoffs is very certain. So, I just have a hard time reconciling the purchase of this equipment, and I think that's been my statement from August of 2006. I'm still not happy the way this was brought forward. It was not brought forward in the proper manner for us to have a discussion. So, I'm sorry, but that's my position, I'm not going to support either one of those alternatives, although I do thank Ms. Windowshausen for the hard work she's done in bringing it forward.
Kirk?
Yeah, I think it was actually about 26 months ago that we made the purchase. We contractually obligated ourselves to a purchase on January 23 of 2007, when the board voted to enter into the contract. Where we are today is having to figure out how we're going to meet that obligation, how we're going to pay for that commitment that we made two years, two months ago. I'm somebody that absolutely believes in limiting your overall obligation, but you've always heard me speak to the issue of unfunded obligations. We have an opportunity here to hang on to our cash, to have a payment that is met out of existing committed reserves over a longer period of time, and provides maximum flexibility if in a year we decide that accelerating the payment and paying it all down makes the most sense versus in five years, we decide that paying it all down makes the most sense. the most sense versus in five years, we decide that paying it all down makes the most sense. I, you know, if it's the board's preference to move forward with option one, I'm not going to oppose it. I just don't think it's the most prudent use of cash at this point when we have estimated earnings on the cash that largely will offset the interest carry costs in the longer scenario. And I think keeping our cash would be more prudent and more appropriate at this time. But like I said, I'm not going to, I'm not going to vote against a motion in favor of option one, I just believe that option two B is the most prudent.
Robert?
I don't disagree with anything you just said. I think it's a, the alternatives are nuanced difference, I guess. I mean, one, you know, they're based on expectations, which I think are fairly firm. I don't see interest rates dramatically changing, but you know, who would have thought we'd be in this economy two years ago? I just prefer alternative one somewhat more, because I think it fits our budgeting condition and circumstances, and I am worried about the economy and what might happen and the pressure on us to divert those reserves that we already have to completely different uses. So to me, it's, your points are well taken and they're accurate. I just, because of those reasons, prefer alternative one.
Is there anybody, I've heard that enough here, is there anybody in the audience who'd like to make any comments on this item? Please come forward and we'd like your name and your address, please, for the record.
My name is Lou Sigmund with Metavista. Question is, this particular contract that you got into, it seems like, question would be that can't you go ahead and renegotiate at that particular contract, especially when the stock market at that time was 14,000 versus now, you know, just a little bit over 7,000? Additionally, it seems like what Jennifer was saying, as far as the money that you're spending, wouldn't it be better to go ahead and have this money spent on more sheriffs? I'm a member of Placer County, and I would be more interested in having more sheriffs coming around and protecting our neighborhood than maybe being spent on a helicopter.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to comment? Seeing that, I will close it, bring it back to the board for a motion. Mr. Sheriff, I could just answer a couple of questions that the gentleman just explained, or just brought up. We did, we do have a contract to purchase helicopter. It's not negotiable, we've gone that route through purchasing, it was built to our specifications, it's even painted green with a nice emblem on it, so a little bit difficult to sell. And we did, and we did talk to the board extensively last time about that particular option. And I think also, as the sheriff has brought up before, I'm sure he'd be willing to say it again, I think he looks at this as a force multiplier, I think is a term I've heard, that it extends his resources around different areas, but it's, I think that was raised at the last meeting as well, that how this tool is viewed in terms of providing public safety.
Robert?
I'm happy to make a motion, if I could make just one quick comment afterward, but I would move that we acquire the helicopter through financing alternative one up on the screen in front of us, which essentially is a seven-year term, 2.206 interest rate contract that uses the $2.5 million in reserves towards the actual purchase price itself. And the comment I'd just make is related to the question that was just asked, that I think our, we have a very good sheriff, Ed Bonner, in spite of the fact that he graduated from Delaware High School and Cal. But I'm going to defer to him to tell us how he should actually manage and staff and use the resources of the sheriff's department, because I think he's done a really good job, and I've actually been up on the helicopter, and I do agree that it's prospectively a phenomenal tool in the mix of all of the tools that we have. But I'm certainly not going to second guess how the sheriff's department ought to be run, because it's not my expertise, but I do want to make the point that I think we need to look at all of our existing budgets as units that may not have an opportunity for any growth over the next couple of years, and in fact, we may be confronted with some difficult decisions about seeing those decline some. So that's my comment and motion.
Have a second? I'd like to make a comment before I get a second. We have a motion. I was formerly a police officer and retired from the city of Roseville. I've flown with SAC County, I've flown with CHP, and I've flown with Placer County. I've seen Sheriff Bonner over his career, he does a phenomenal job with his department and the deputies that represent us here in Placer County. And I agree, it's a tool. It's one more tool, it makes it safer for the officers on the ground, whether they be deputies or officers or California Highway Patrol in a major situation. At nighttime, it has the flexibility of having the FLIR, the forward-looking infrared, finds people hiding in different locations, but it also reduces the risk in high-speed pursuits, because a helicopter can follow a vehicle like that and make it a little safer on the ground. But I know this is tough economic times, and some people are going to question our decision, how will we vote and is going to say that we were stupid or whatever, but if I can give the sheriff, his department, and the men and women that serve Placer County one more tool to use in their arsenal to keep us safe, then I think it's worth it. So that's, I just wanted to make that comment. So we need a second.
Oh, a second.
Okay, let's do a roll call on this.
McGint, Holmes, Euler, Montgomery?
Yes.
Rockcomb?
Yes. Yes.
In the direction is set to return on April 7th. I'm sure staff will do, be diligent to do that, but in essence, we're setting up a fairly complicated financing arrangement where the county and the treasurer are offset of each other. And I personally have never wrote documents releasing a helicopter, nor do I think anybody in my staff has. We will do our best. If it doesn't make the 7th, I would recommend we do it right, because it's a seven-year deal, and although it's costing us some amount of money to park this airplane or this helicopter in Texas, we will be, it's diligent, we can, but Janine has come up with a great idea, a unique idea, one I haven't worked on before, so we'll do our best.
And thank all of you for the hard work and the due diligence that you have done, and I thank our board members for being courageous enough to make this decision. We're going to take a quick five-minute break. Thanks. Good work.[1043.63]
How are you?
Morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the Board. I'm Captain Don Hutchinson with Placer County Sheriff's Department. With me today is Barbara Bassana with the Sheriff's Department and Mr. Richard Brady is the President of Matrix Consulting Group. Here today to talk to you about our dispatch study we just concluded. And today we're requesting the Board take action on the following items. Accept the Sheriff's Department Public Safety Dispatch Study, including but not limited to recommendations to consolidate the public safety dispatch centers, direct staff to work with the sheriffs and personnel to develop a plan to implement the study recommendations, direct personnel and CEO to engage in discussions with PPEO related to classifications and compensation, and direct personnel to submit the recommended classification specification changes to the Civil Service Commission for consideration and approval. Further approval will be sought from your Board based on the plan and adjustments as developed as these items are completed. By way of background, in March 2008, your Board approved the county procurement process to retain the services of a specialized consulting firm to conduct an organizational assessment of the Sheriff's Department Dispatch Services Unit and provide recommendations to improve organization effectiveness. This assessment would include analysis of organizational structure, operational practices, management practices, classifications, recruitment strategies, employment exams, current post-re requirements, and training programs and policies. It was intended that this study be completed on an aggressive timeline with frequent meetings of the Steering Committee. The study Steering Committee consisted of management staff from the Sheriff's Department, the Personnel Department, Administrative Services Department, and the County Executive Office. Subsequent to that action, your Board approved the contract with Matrix Consulting Group to complete the study on behalf of the county. As the CEO indicated in their budget message to the Board on February 24, 2009, it is clear that we cannot continue to operate with the business-as-usual philosophy. Placer County now faces the additional challenges resulting from economic downturns. It is critical that the most efficient and economic methods be employed in the delivery of service. This study and resulting recommendations are consistent with that concept. The scope of the study included a comprehensive analysis of the Sheriff's Department Dispatch Services compared to industry standards and best practices for emergency dispatch operations in law enforcement environment. I'm going to now turn it over to Mr. Richard Brady of the Matrix Consulting Group. He's the President of the Consulting Group, and we do have a PowerPoint presentation.
Hi, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board of Supervisors. I am Richard Brady, the President of Matrix Consulting Group out of Palo Alto, California. I have the task of trying to be as persuasive as a sheriff without wearing a gun, but I do have a PowerPoint presentation. So, I know you're running a little bit late. I'll try to be relatively brief and hopefully not speak too quickly in running through what we did in this study and what we came up with. First of all, a little bit more about the background. Evaluation of support services within law enforcement is a growing area of interest in Placer County and in California and across the country because of the growing technological needs, the increases in demands for service, and the need for professionalism that is very different from what existed in something like dispatch services 10, 20, 30 years ago. So, within that context, Placer County asks many of the kinds of questions that counties are asking throughout the state and across the country. And there's some special things within Placer County that makes this study like this even more important. Most notably is your growth. Over the last 10 or 20 years, you've grown at a very rapid rate in a very large geographical county, and that's placed increasing demands, not just on the resource needs in terms of financial resources needed to run a dispatch center, but on the workload and the demands for professionalism and technology and organization of these kinds of services that serve public safety professionals in police and fire, as well as citizens when they call in for requests for service. Because of the growing need for professionalism, for high levels of technology, and for highly-trained employees, I think an important part of this study was very multifaceted. To look at the operational requirements of the center, to look at the staffing, to look at the technology requirements, to look at a common problem in this county and throughout the country of how do we keep employees motivated and on board in this employment area that has, across the country, extremely high turnover rates because it is a very tough job. An important part of this is looking at employee retention and recruitment. It's also looking at the things that make up the basis for that in terms of the policies and procedures, the training, the organization and management systems that underlie the So, what our scope of work was in this study was just as comprehensive. As the Captain mentioned, it was to take a comprehensive look at the workload, services, staffing, and organization, deployment, management of the center. Your RFP and our scope of work came up with several discrete emphases and focuses in this study, each of which had deliverable associated with it. And as the Captain mentioned, we worked closely with the county and the Sheriff's Office and the dispatch units in order to go through this study. But those discrete elements related to the organizational structure and management of the two centers, it looked at the staffing needs of the two centers, the recruitment and retention efforts, the training needs, your efforts at developing a comprehensive and detailed, informalized emergency management plan. An important part was to update the employee classifications and the compensation system to make sure that both of those represented the actual duties of employees, but also within a market context of what's going on around you in terms of what you need to pay employees in this kind of effort. Lastly, but most importantly, I think any large county with multiple dispatch centers needs to look at the efficiency and cost-effectiveness of that, as well as important issues related to consistency and standards of service. So, we looked at consolidation as a feasibility analysis for the two centers. Our methodologies in the study were equally comprehensive. First of all, it took a lot of input from county staff ranging from the CEO's office, human resources within the county, information technology, emergency management within the county, certainly within the Sheriff's Office, the key users. We had extensive interviews for patrol, detective, and other staff throughout the county, but also for fire, and we interviewed several of the fire chiefs that contract with you and are served by dispatch services from one of the two centers. But also very extensive interviews within the dispatch centers themselves. We interviewed most of the staff one-on-one. We spent a great deal of time observing services within the two centers, and several employees were interviewed twice. We augmented the employee interviews with employee surveys. So, I think internally, we got a great deal of input from employees and by people who are served by the dispatch centers themselves. Being management consultants, we wouldn't be doing our job well if we didn't collect a lot of information, too. So, I think if you look at our 150-some-page report, probably half of the pages are numbers and not words, and it shows that we employed a large number of detailed quantitative types of analyses of how highly utilized staff are within the center, what is exactly the level of service being provided to the community and public safety professionals, as well as the costs and the alternatives that we looked at. We also looked at best management practices. We did some comparative surveys. We compared you to, in that sense, the theory of what the best that you could be providing dispatch services throughout the county, but also how prevalent those best practices are in this region and other places in California. Again, as the Captain mentioned, it was an interactive process. We met every three or four weeks with a broadly-based steering committee that included county management, management within the Sheriff's Office, human resources and information technology staff, and staff from within dispatch. Just quickly, some of the key issues which helped frame this study. As I keep mentioning, turnover is a huge problem for dispatch operations here and throughout the country. Your turnover rate here has averaged about 24% over the last five years or so, and that's incredible. So, a quarter of your employees leave every year. While that is not uncommon, increasingly, counties and larger jurisdictions are realizing that you're making quite an investment in employees only to throw it away when they're leaving. Some of them don't even pass probation. About a third of the employees you hire don't even pass probation, and then others leave either voluntarily or for other reasons as they get through their careers. That is a major problem. You're spending money recruiting employees, training employees, keeping them on board, and then you lose them. Some of the more progressive agencies, I think, around the state and around the country now realize that this is a problem and are making more serious efforts at better matching the job to who we're trying to recruit and employing what I'm calling more employee-centric kinds of approaches to keeping employees on board besides some of the basics of pay and other forms of compensation. I think issue number two is that before this project began, while there's always been differences in the way the two centers were managed in Tahoe City and in Auburn, you recently changed the management within the Auburn Center, replaced a civilian manager with a sworn manager, at least on an interim basis. So, that was an important aspect that we looked at, too. But because of the differences in size, there were different management structures as well. The Tahoe City operation is essentially managed by a supervisor, while Auburn, being a larger operation, has a manager and then goes down to supervisors. Important difference, which affects the operations of the centers as well. I think the good news is that the two centers operate effectively from both the citizen's perspective in terms of how rapidly phone calls are answered, but also from the perspective of public safety professionals in terms of not queuing excessively units, especially for high-priority types of calls, and that high level of service is reflected in both the police side, the law enforcement side, and the fire and emergency medical side. The second thing I'd like to point out is that both through survey and through interviews, I think it's pretty clear that the employees you have are very dedicated, very committed to providing a high level of service, and really want to see the thing work. As I mentioned, the next issue is that there are several operational and employee-centric kinds of changes which should be considered, both in terms of organization and management of the center, but things that you need to do with respect to recruitment, retention, and compensation and classification of employees that should start to address issues of high levels of turnover throughout the center or centers. Lastly, consolidation does offer opportunities to reduce costs or translate reductions in costs into different ways of providing the service, including improved technology, improved resources dedicated to things like recruitment and retention, those types of issues. But it also provides an important opportunity to standardize the service and to make it more consistent throughout the county. I'm just going to quickly talk about the employee input because I think it was so important to us. As I mentioned, we use an employee survey, which is a way to quantify employee attitudes. Most of the employees responded about 70%. I think the good news here, too, is that most employees felt like they were providing an exceptional level of service to public safety professionals and to citizens, and that's certainly one of those important bottom lines in this kind of thing. I think an interesting thing that came out of this survey was that they felt that communications between dispatch and the public and especially the public safety professionals being served was really quite good, and communication and coordination of services was quite good. But that coordination and communication between the two centers was not so good. So, that was, again, one of those issues that's underlying some of the alternatives that we looked at. I think that there are several issues associated with how the centers are managed, which ultimately has an impact on employee recruitment and retention in terms of how you feel about your job, things relating to accountability of staff, recognition of employee performance, support, and then other types of things relating to compensation and classification and things like that. I think the conclusion, the finding that came out of the survey was that overall compensation, total compensation was viewed to be relatively adequate, but pay was not as a subset of that. Views towards consolidation were, what consultants like to say, mixed, meaning there's kind of a bell curve of some people were very much against it, some people were very much for it, with a large number of imperceptions within the middle. Analysis of staffing options. When we looked at staffing, we looked at it two ways. One is if you continue to have separate operations in Auburn and Tahoe City, and the second was what opportunities consolidation has to make the centers, the provision of public safety communications more efficient and cost-effective throughout the county. In terms of option number one, continue separate centers, you've got about the right number of staff that you have now to provide an effective level of service. It requires some overtime, mostly because of peak workloads, but also because of the attrition issue, but the staffing levels are about where they need to be to provide those services. But as we'll discuss in a moment, option number two, looking at the feasibility of consolidation, because of the inherent problems of running one very small operation and one larger operation, smaller dispatch operations are inherently inefficient because you have to have a basic level of service, a basic level of staffing, in order just to be in the business of providing dispatch, even though the workload does not really support even one dispatcher there. So, you can run a consolidated dispatch center with quite a few fewer staff if you chose to take that approach. Analysis of organization, we make a strong set of recommendations relating to the fact that dispatch services, even if you continue to have two dispatch centers in the county, is essentially one service throughout the county, and it should have one manager managing those services, again, through policy, training, et cetera, to address consistency and standardization of the service throughout the county. Secondly, that position should be civilian. There are a lot of pros and cons about having sworn versus non-sworn management within public safety communications. I think the trend in, I know that the trend throughout the country has been to civilianize that, and the reason is that sworn personnel rotate through communications as an assignment. They sometimes last every about two or three years. It's now a very technologically-oriented operation and requiring extensive knowledge of computer hardware and software. It also is dealing with a different kind of employee classification than you typically do when you're a sworn supervisor in something like patrol or dispatch. And then they turn over, and you've got a learning curve of another year or two, and a new person comes in. There's been a growing professionalization within public safety communications throughout the country of people who are trained, have worked for years within the technology and the human resources side of this important function, and as a result, there's quite a pool of available managers out there or promoted within for appropriately trained and qualified personnel. The second side of the organization side is really the management of operations, and here, I think this is this long-term trend, part of what is the backdrop, one of the backdrops to this study, is the need to have more formal approaches to policies and procedures. I think they're mostly kind of random notes right now, sort of stitched together, and as that relates to important aspects such as training and things like that, you need to be more formal, you need to make staff more accountable and held to policies and procedures, and these need to be updated as well. On the feasibility of consolidation, we have a very extensive analysis in our report which shows that you really should develop a detailed plan to consolidate the two centers. It does offer the opportunity to provide the same level of service in terms of responsiveness to citizens and to public safety professionals, at least compared to what you've got right now. But it offers many advantages associated with not just potential cost-effectiveness, but standardization of that service and a seamless service throughout the county. And again, the issue here is the problem of a small dispatch center, is that you've got relatively poorly utilized employees in the small center just to be in the business of providing services at all. Analysis of recruitment and retention, I think our recommendations fall in two areas here. One is the need to become more creative at the countywide human resources level and the Sheriff's Office, Sheriff's Department's human resources level, to take some of the more traditional approaches to recruitment and to use more innovative or creative ways, using the Internet, but also using employees more in the recruitment and retention efforts, including having committees of county and dispatch staff to help examine the problem, including having employee mentoring as a device to keep employees within the center and not have them drop out during probation or early on in their career throughout the center. The policies and procedures and training comes up here again in terms of increasing the professionalism. The policies and procedures also has an impact on making staff, supervisors, and managers more accountable for what they're doing, more measurable in terms of what they're doing. So, we've got a large number of recommendations there to address recruitment and retention issues. Training is part of that, and some similar kinds of recommendations here relating to being more creative, using existing employees, and a broadly-based approach within the county and within the Sheriff's Department to address training needs, to develop proficiency testing, to monitor the program every year, to make sure that your staff are performing according to commitments that you've made internally and industry standards as measured by best practices, or you could adopt standards through external kind of agencies such as the National Public Safety Dispatching Operation, CALIA, the accreditation system, and things like that. Lastly, classification and compensation issues. Apart from some issues that arose relating to specialty pays and things like that, I think the principal issues here and the things you need to address relate to employee classification and compensation, and those issues revolve around the fact that employee classification and compensation need to better reflect the actual duties that dispatchers are now performing in today's environment, and two, how that relates to the market. And you've got some issues in both. The employee classifications need to be updated and revised, and you need to redouble your efforts to look at how pay, in terms of salary and hourly compensation, compares to the market, but also fringe benefits, specialty pays, and things like that. In summary, overall staffing is adequate, but consolidation really does offer you an opportunity to either save costs or to do different kinds of things creatively with the money that you could save. It gives you a number of choices in terms of how you provide the service or reducing costs in public safety communications. Secondly, and most very importantly, enhance recruitment and retention efforts through a series of career development, internal and external, and employee-centric kinds of measures. Thirdly, training and policies and procedures need to be formalized and people held accountable for those, and these need to be monitored on an annual basis. And lastly, on the classification and compensation issues, making sure that you have measures that are consistent with what people are actually doing and paying people accordingly. So, that's a 150-page report as fast as I could give it. So, thank you very much.
Anyone have any questions? Good detail.
Thank you.
Jennifer, you ain't got away scot-free.
Yeah, you're not quite got away yet, sorry.
I was starting to go backwards.
It's so nice to just be able to walk away and say thank you.
It is.
When you talk about the project methodology, methodology, I can say that, did you involve any community members in the process?
No, we did not.
And why was that?
Well, there's a substantial cost associated with doing a community survey that we didn't think your budget or our budget could afford. And secondly, we have found in doing this and other studies that, first of all, most people don't call public safety communications, a communication center, many times in their lifetimes, but certainly not in any measurable kind of way in terms of getting some realistic opinion. So, you're tending to get So you're tending to get biased opinions about law enforcement and fire and public safety services in general, or some bias because if we were lucky enough to find somebody who had called up, that they were able to distinguish between the responders and the dispatchers and things like that. So we found it's not very valuable. So we look at the evidence of that in terms of complaints against dispatchers and what you do to control the interaction between your public safety dispatchers and the community through training, through policies, through review, through mentoring and things like that.
Perhaps I was unclear, but I'm really more interested in why we didn't get community input onto the perception of what this would do to public safety response in the local area.
You mean in terms of the consolidation alternative?
Yeah. I think that's going to be a huge concern with people in the basin, and it may be a legitimate concern, it may not be a legitimate concern, but I feel very strongly that their voice should have been part of this process and part of the recommendation, be that isn't made, that's, you know, over.
Can I just follow up on that for a second now? You know, I think that is an important part of what needs to happen. I think this was an initial feasibility study, and I think that once you develop a plan, certainly public input would be a part of that. However, we wrote and analyzed very extensively within the report of why this is important and because it's a fallacy that you've got full-time dispatching in Tahoe City anyway. It's about halftime there, and halftime it's in Auburn anyway. Secondly, you know, there are a lot of things that you need to do to address that concern. And what many agencies have done, especially large dispatch operations have done in counties such as this, is that they'll have dispatcher ride-alongs in the area that's affected by consolidation and other kinds of training relating to the geography, special topographical characteristics that are often used for things like identifying where you are and things like that that help address that problem.
And just to be clear, for public disclosure, I'm really familiar with dispatch in the Tahoe Basin. My husband's one of the firefighters who's currently dispatched through our dispatch center, just so that's out there. Additional question I had was, you said views towards consolidation of the centers were mixed. Could you elaborate on that a little bit?
Among staff and employee service. It means there was a range of opinions, some highly supportive, some highly unsupportive, many in the middle.
And can we make the assumption that the employees in the Tahoe Basin were not in favor of a consolidation, or is that a false assumption to make?
That would be a fairly good assumption to make.
Thank you. And then...
But it wasn't exclusively that.
Right.
Auburn had mixed views.
And then last, but certainly not least, in your summary, you say while overall staffing is adequate, the county should take immediate steps to consolidate its two dispatch centers. I want to make sure I understand exactly what you're proposing there. Would your proposal be, and I understand this may not be the sheriff's department's proposal, but would your proposal in this summary be to close the Tahoe City Center immediately, or just to consolidate their functions under the Auburn Dispatch Center?
If you look at what we said about organization and management, you should take immediate steps to centralize the management of the two centers if you do nothing else. Have it under the command or management of a single individual, and that should be a non-sworn person. That's, you should do immediately. As an initial feasibility study, we think that the county should develop a plan to further evaluate and potentially fully consolidate organizationally the two dispatch centers into a single center, but that's going to take some time.
Thank you. I just wanted to be clear on what you were getting at there. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
I'd like to give Barbara Vassana an opportunity to talk real quickly about the fiscal impacts of the study.
Thank you, Barbara Vassana with the Sheriff's Department. The current action that's requested today does not immediately impact the budget. The board action would accept the study and provide direction to staff to implement the study recommendations. And as Jennifer mentioned, that would include, if the board so desired, the plan to consolidate the two centers. We are expecting, based on the implementation plan, to be developed to expend less money on future background investigations, training, overtime, coverage, and employee claims in general. Just for the board's information, if you look at a range of what it costs to train an employee, it ranges about $60,000 to $100,000 per employee. If we have that attrition rate of 25 percent of our staff, that in staff of what's currently 37 people, you figure about eight people, you're really losing about $300,000 to $400,000 a year on training people that don't stay with the county. So that's a huge amount right there. More specifically, based on the recommendations, a reduction of overall staffing required for public safety operations is expected if the board approves consolidation of the dispatch centers. Cost savings from reduced staffing may be offset to some extent with adjustments to classification and compensation and other study recommendations that may come forward for your board's approval. And I'll hand that back over to Don.
In conclusion, I would like to publicly thank both the Makers Consulting Group. I think they gave us a great playbook to work from. They did a lot of work on this. I'd also like to thank the staff at the two dispatch centers for their input and hard work in contributing to this report, and also the steering members of the steering committee. This was really a joint effort from the steering committee between the CEO's office, the sheriff's department, the personnel and admin services to come up with exactly kind of what we needed to move forward, and I really appreciate their hard work in coming up with this. And then we're available for questions. We do also have answers in there here from personnel if there's any questions on personnel issues.
Are there any other questions from the board members? I'll open it up to the public. Anybody in the public wishing to make a comment on this? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board.
Recommendation of move approval, staff recommendations, item one through four. Staff report.
Second.
I'm sorry, just can I get a clarification on that? Is that to actually consolidate the centers into one center at Auburn, or to allow for attrition over time?
Well, I'm flexible. I think we should obviously centralize the management and look in that direction, and you know, I'm happy to hear feedback from staff as we move forward in that direction.
Jennifer, if we could make a clarification, it is the sheriff's desire to have a consolidation plan that is phased over time, and we hope to bring that back to the board as part of the implementation plan.
That's fine with me.
And if I might just add into that, it was always my understanding that it would be done through either people, and we know some folks have already applied to other dispatch centers, or retrain our people for other positions.
Thank you, just because I could not support today closing the Tahoe City Center. I just want to make sure that the folks who are, some of them very long-term employees up there have either the opportunity over time to potentially move within the sheriff's office or find alternative work. So, thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second. All those in favor? Aye. Oppose? Thank you. Good work. Now we will take up item 5B.
Actually, I was going to get another pair of these. No, I had them, but I decided to go with the other.
Anytime you're ready, Becky.
Okay. Good morning, Becky. Riggin from the County Executive Office. The next item for consideration by your board today is a series of recommendations regarding fleet services. I would like to quickly introduce the staff who have assisted with the development of these recommendations, and they are available for any questions that you may have. With me at the table is Mark Giacomin from the County Executive Office. Also behind me, I believe, is James Importante, another analyst in our office, and in the audience are Ken Grimm, Bob Blazer, and Chuck Gordon from Fleet Services. And they will be available for you if you have any questions. I will be providing a brief summary of the full staff report, which begins on page 39 in your packets. The action being requested of your board today is to, one, review staff recommendations regarding countywide fleet utilization; two, direct staff to return to your board with a revised fleet utilization and replacement policy, along with appropriate amendments to the Placer County Code as indicated in this report; and three, direct reductions to mileage-related line items consistent with these policies in the fiscal year 9-10 proposed budget, anticipated to be a total countywide reduction of $443,000. Placer County's current regulatory policies allow for considerable discretion and variance among departments regarding the purchase and use of county vehicles. Over the past five years, changes in fleet utilization practices have resulted in a dramatic escalation in costs, most notably from the increased inventory of take-home cars in which an employee is allowed to use an assigned vehicle for work-related duties and also for the purpose of commuting to and from work. In follow-up to the February 24 budget and policy briefing to your board, county executive staff were directed to work with Public Works Fleet Services Division to conduct a countywide review of fleet cost and utilization trends for the past several years. Your board report contains a number of detailed charts and graphs, and we have provided them in a PowerPoint presentation should you wish to discuss them. The data in these charts were used as indicators to highlight areas of interest, but the recommendations are also based on the observations and recommendations of fleet staff over the past many years. I will cite just a few indicators from the data to provide a frame of reference for the discussion. Since 2004 and '05, the total number of light fleet vehicles in use by Placer County rose from a total of 739 to 841 in 2008-09, an increase of 102 or 14 percent over that five-year period. A similar comparison of mileage-related expenses shows that actual expenditures rose from $3.7 million to a final budget amount of $5.6 million for fiscal year 8-9, an increase of 51 percent over the same five years. Incremental changes to fleet practices to reduce costs have been made over the past several years, and actions such as reducing fleet assignments and curtailing mileage expenses have resulted in ongoing annualized savings of approximately $200,000. However, given the current economic challenges and the continuing decline of the county's primary revenue streams, such as property tax, sales tax, and public safety sales tax, the adoption of more prudent policies regarding the purchase and use of county vehicles is being recommended. The series of policy and funding recommendations presented today are anticipated to result in savings of $443,000 in the county's 9-10 proposed budget, but they are also anticipated to yield additional savings in future years with little if any impact to direct services. And I'd like to make just a comment or two about our approach in developing these recommendations. Our goal was to develop recommendations that would be generally consistent across the county, but we also recognize that overly prescriptive policies simply wouldn't be appropriate for all departments. You will notice that there are many exceptions built into these recommendations, most notably to accommodate for the unique nature of some public safety duty assignments. We would also anticipate that the final policies would identify an approach for seeking authorization for exceptions to these policies if required. And unless you have any questions at this point, I would like to review the specific policy recommendations. And Greg, if you could turn on the PowerPoint, please? Yeah, I don't have a clicker, so Greg, you're going to have to move the slides for me. Okay, these recommendations fall into four categories. The first is assigned vehicles for day use. The second is assigned vehicles for overnight use. The third are recommendations for vehicle purchase, and the fourth, recommendations for vehicle identification. So under assigned vehicles for day use, currently county vehicles are assigned to staff for use during the day and for overnight use absent countywide standards or demonstrated need to perform assigned duties. So recommendation one is to establish a minimum threshold requirement of 6,000 to 8,000 annual miles for a vehicle to be assigned to an employee. Now, this would equate to, you know, approximately 500 to 600 miles per month to make that cost effective. And that basically was just the tipping point in the cost-benefit analysis for determining whether we should assign a car for specific individual use. And then for recommendations for overnight use of vehicles, the second recommendation would be to adopt policies and guidelines relating to the management and use of take-home vehicles in order to ensure efficient and cost-effective use and reasonable assignment to emergency response personnel. Third recommendation would be to adopt policy restricting take-home vehicles to employees with primary residences within Placer County, with the exception of those employees residing east of the summit, those assigned to special programs such as the Sheriff's Corner or K-9 units, or other exceptions approved by the county executive officer. Under recommendations for vehicle purchase, fleet has increased a vehicle replacement with more fuel-efficient models by 25 percent over the past few years. And clearly, there are legitimate uses for heavier vehicles and conducting county business, such as for off-road work or for utility maintenance. However, we would like to see this practice expanded to discourage unnecessary use of SUVs in the future. So, policy four would be to adopt a policy to limit future SUV acquisitions to specific off-road and snow country applications. And recommendation five would be to adopt policy to increase the number of fuel-efficient vehicles acquired as replacement vehicles. And then the final recommendation for vehicle identification, although general fleet vehicles, which are all vehicles other than public safety leased vehicles, are identified with small decals in the rear side windows, the overall body of the vehicle is essentially unmarked. With larger and more visible decals on the sides of the vehicles, there likely would be increased accountability by drivers for ensuring that the vehicles are used strictly for county purposes. So the final recommendation number six would be to adopt policy to require each county vehicle to display prominent decals on the body of the vehicle to clearly identify it as a Placer County car, with the exception of leased vehicles, those designated for undercover activities, or other exceptions approved by the county executive office. So unless you have any questions about the recommendations, I would like to move on to the recommended funding reductions. The county executive recommends that funding levels be rolled back to the average cost of fiscal years 2005 through 2007 for mileage-related expenses, except where departments have already reduced expenditures to that level or below. Another of our goals in developing these policies was to not unduly penalize departments who have already targeted vehicle-related costs in their current or prior year funding reduction strategies to this level or below. You will notice that of the county's 24 departments, only seven are currently targeted for funding reduction. The remaining departments not listed here have already reduced their mileage-related funding to this targeted level of the average cost for 2005 through '07, and in some cases even below that level. It is important to note that of the many budget line items associated with fleet costs, only those associated with mileage are targeted for reductions. Currently, no reductions are identified in the other fleet-related line items such as lease principal and interest, insurance, unscheduled vehicle maintenance and repair. It is anticipated that these recommendations would result, as I said earlier, in an overall savings of $443,000 to the estimated $6 million total annual countywide light fleet-related And if you would like, we could go through the individual recommendations for the departments on the chart, or I could answer any questions if you had them at this time.
If I could interject for just a minute, because I think we need to have a little bit of context here, and I think, thank you for the excellent presentation there, Becky, and I know the hard work that all departments, fleet included, has put into this. Is it, and again, for the audience at home, this is a continuation of an item that came to your board previously, and in fact, it's something that has been worked on back to November and back many years in terms of fleet policies that the board has put into play over the years that have served the county well. Essentially, from this last November, the county has saved about $200,000 in addition to what is here because of departments cutting back on their vehicle usage. Sometimes there's a misconception what counties and entities do with their fleets, and I think it's important that we put that in context. Is that, you know, the county has a bunch of big, heavy, yellow equipment, specialized police equipment, and other types of things that are not part of this light fleet that we're talking about. This is mostly sedans and SUVs and predominantly sedans that are out there being used by county employees. The county has different ways of using its vehicles. I know fleet has a number of pooled vehicles. It's available for county employees, whether or not they're going to do family home visits for child protectors. for child protective services, whether it involves training, whether it involves health inspections, or whatever, those cars are available and checked out as needed, but those pool vehicles are kept to a pretty minor amount because it's expensive hardware to be sitting waiting for use that's random and occasionally. But part of, I know what Chuck does, is keep the mileage up on those cars so we have vehicles that are available and yet being well-used at the same time, but not extra cars sitting around to be utilized. And that's in what I call fleet's pool. Then we have departmentally allocated cars. Sometimes those are pool cars, same kind of business activity where an individual department has a lot of occasional use of different types of cars, then those can be used by multiple employees doing the business of the county and the way it needs to be done and traveling to do that, but using it on a departmental pool by basis. And then, kind of critical to sometimes people's interests, is assigned vehicles. And 99 percent, if not, maybe slightly lower than that, is that these cars are assigned to people who need these customarily all the time, you know, and that's, I think you've heard part of it, the investigators. We have special occurrence when we're talking about patrol cars being taken home because they had an added public safety element to the community at large. But we also have other folks. We have trappers, the guys who get to go out and take care of the skunks when they're in somebody's backyard at all hours of the morning and night. Actually, in the same vein, we have board of supervisors who have sometimes those skunky problems that you folks have to deal with, really at all times of the day and night. I know that many of you, I was at my son's volleyball game on Saturday, and Jennifer's emailing me about the sheriff's dispatch report, and so I know she's working hard on county business. I know Rocky was called about a cemetery issue over the weekend. I know many times it does necessitate your board and Jim too, as well as Robert and Kirk. I could pick any one of you and tell similar stories, are out there weekends, nights, conducting the business of the county. I'm sure you know whenever you're doing anything, going to the grocery store, you are on your business, and the public expects you, and you do answer their questions, and you're always available. I've seen you just in the distance at many events doing that work of the county on a regular basis. You know, there are other alternatives. We could do the reimbursement of mileage. I went back to look at the records of Supervisor Krantz, who's easy to talk about because he's not here. That's the only reason. But I think he had 77,000 miles on his county vehicle over that period of time. My math, looking at a 50 cents a mile reimbursement rate, would have been about $38,000 spent on reimbursement. I know that the rate is varied over that time, but it's a very big chunk of money that would be gone to pay for those costs. Forget about the liability, forget about private vehicles getting stuck off the road while you're up visiting the Forest Hill variants that I know Supervisor Holmes went and took a look at prior to last board meetings, and then dealing with damaging a private car on public business and all those other hassles. Economically, it's preferable for the county and the taxpayers to have assigned vehicles for special position, including the boards, because of the nature of the work that's to be done, that needs to be done. Even within that context, though, there's ways to make sure we're doing it cost-effectively. And I, you know, appreciate your board letting us moving forward with this item. I think the public will be well-served, but I think we need to put aside the nonsense that assigned vehicles are not part of the county's take-home business, assigned vehicles are not part of the legitimate needs of the county to provide services to the public that we serve. You need them, other departments need them, we gotta provide those, and I just need to make sure that we touch upon that in this overall presentation. And I think the policies that we've worked out with all the county departments will make sure that we do in a most cost-effective manner, utilizing those resources that are entrusted by the taxpayers to your board. And then I'll try and shut up and be quiet for a while.
Any other questions on the board? Anybody from the audience wish to make a comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we direct staff to come back to our board with our fleet utilization replacement policy, along with appropriate amendments to the county code, and that, let's see, on item three, that we move forward with the direction, the reduction of the mileage-related items in order to achieve our tightening budget goals.
No comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Nice presentation. All right, we'll take up item number seven.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Maureen Bowman with the Adult System of Care. I'm here to request approval for a resolution authorizing the use of an additional 30 days of involuntary psychiatric hold, as allowed under the Welfare and Institutions Code 5270.10 to 10.63. Placer County currently has, can extend a person's involuntary stay in a lock facility for an additional 14 days if they are deemed to be a danger to themselves or others and/or have been determined to be gravely disabled. This hold is allowed under the Welfare and Institutions Code 5150 and 5250, and during this 14-day period, an attempt is made to assess and stabilize the individual and develop a treatment plan. In addition, while that 14-day period is helpful, it's often not long enough to accomplish everything we want to accomplish, having a very thorough assessment, achieving full stabilization, determining the future treatment options, and to investigate if there are family and our community resources that can support that person in the community. Having sufficient time for this more thorough assessment, treatment, and investigative process, along with the individual continuing to be a danger to themselves or others, often results in that individual being placed in a more restrictive and costly institutional setting and being placed under the extensive powers and authority of a county-managed conservatorship. Conservatorships result in an individual losing many of his or her rights due self-determination and also adds to the Placer County Public Guardians Program's caseload and cost. Welfare and Institutions Code 5270.10 to 5270.65 allows for a 30-day extension of the 14-day hold. It is the intent of this section of the code to reduce the number of persons who are gravely disabled for whom a conservatorship petition is filed. The additional 30 days would only be used when needed to accomplish treatment goals. It is anticipated that utilizing the 5270 hold, which provides a longer and therefore more costly hospitalization of involuntary treatment, will actually avoid more restrictive and costly institutional placements and therefore in long-term institutional settings and on a reduction of those costs, as well as reduction of the costs associated with filing a conservatorship petition and managing the conservatorships. Authorizing the use of the 5270 hold requires that the county board of supervisors pass a resolution that authorizes its application and makes a finding that any additional costs incurred through implementation of the 5270 hold will not result in current service reductions. Implementation of the recommended action is determined to be cost-neutral. Any additional costs, as I've said, associated with longer involuntary hospitalizations will be offset by savings of the longer-term institutions. I call them institutes for mental disease. We've talked about some of those long-term placements in the past, and also the costs associated with the conservatorship filings and the conservatorship process itself. There's no impact at the County General Fund in this recommendation, so I would be happy to answer any questions and recommend approval of the resolution.
Kirk, you have a question?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I'm curious if, if I were to make a motion supporting the utilization of the 5270 hold, may I also make some nominations of some folks? I'd like to see help. And then we could adjourn to closed session to come up with a list.
It's not on the agenda.
I'm not sure I'm comfortable.
I will, I will move.
All those in favor? Aye? Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
I think that's a good thing. I mean, I've dealt with that in the past where 14 days was never enough, and 30 might not be enough either, so.
Yeah, like, you're just extended vacation.
Yeah, and we might all want to be there for evaluation. Now we'll take up item number eight. Janine's here. You know, before you start, I'd like to publicly thank you for all the work you did on the financing stuff for Sheriff Bonner, and it gave me a lot more comfort, and thank you for your work.
You're welcome.
You do a good job.
You're welcome. Well, and we have another situation here for you. Formerly, the board is being asked to pass a resolution authorizing the issue of grant anticipation notes and the amount of $10.3 million for the Rockland Unified School District. By way of background, I recently met with the school district business officials about a month and a half ago to talk about cash flow and financing needs, particularly with respect to impacts from the state budget's ongoing fiscal crisis. And it was called to my attention that a couple of school districts are in a situation where they're in the middle of constructing capital facilities, and their funding that was anticipated from the state has been cut off. Specifically with regard to Rockland School District, they are building a new elementary school, and their funding sources were taxes that they have been collecting from a Melo Russe bond and funding that was due from the state. In early December, the state notified the school district that they should be receiving their money within about three weeks. It is, it is as if the check from the state has literally been cut, and it is sitting down in Sacramento on a desk waiting to be mailed, but is frozen until further notice. I was in Southern California last week at a conference where the finance director for the State of California, Michael Janast, was speaking, and in fact, it will probably be six months to a year before the school district receives this money, and that's what, that's what they had been advised. And so what we're looking to do here is to do a financing through the Treasury in order to allow them to continue construction of their elementary school and bring it online as scheduled. Otherwise, the district is facing costs of up to $1 million to shut down that project and then restart it when they finally receive the money from the state. And so what we're looking at doing is providing a financing through the Treasury for the term until they get their money from the state. So once they get their money from the state, if that turns out to be three months from now, they'll take this financing out, and they'll, they'll pay it back and won't incur any further interest costs. And that way, the construction workers will stay on the job and complete the job and move on to their next job rather than have to be laid off as well. So for both fiscal and economic reasons for the school district in our community, that's why we've worked with the school district to put this financing together. But government code does require that the board of supervisors take action to authorize the issuance of their notes, and their board did unanimously pass their resolution. A copy of their resolution is in your agenda packet, and since it had to be submitted, their board did take action and unanimously passed a resolution to issue the notes and enter into the agreements with the treasurer's office.
Kirk?
Any questions?
Yes. Do we know who has, who has made the decision to withhold these funds? Is it John Chang's office?
It's, well, it's not an office in particular. First of all, it's based on the fact that there isn't any money to forward, and so there are projects across the state, both for school districts, transportation, and other infrastructure. It is the, I always forget the acronym, it's a board comprised of the governor's office represented by the finance director, the state treasurer, and the state comptroller, who ultimately decide the allocation of the funds. When I spoke with Mr. Janast last week, he indicated that by the end of this month, the state was hoping to issue $7 billion and release some of the funds, but I had been advised that money for school projects was probably not going to be their priority at this time. Their priorities were probably going to be more directed towards transportation projects, and that it would probably still be some time before the school district got their money. So it is that, that board, I apologize for my loss of the name of that board, Public Funds Investment Board. I, I'm sorry, I can get that for you, but it is that board comprised of those three officials who decide that. They're hoping to issue additional bonds over the next six months, but probably how their bond sale goes before the end of this month will have an impact on how they move forward as well.
And I, I have to assume that the outcome of the May 19 election will have a dramatic impact on their ability to actually issue those bonds in the first place.
It very well may, yes. Yep, depending upon how it goes. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Let's go ahead.
Oh, I was just gonna add that I am meeting with another school district that has contacted me with a similar circumstance. I'm meeting them next week. I'm not sure what will come of that, but there is the possibility that I will be bringing more of these to you.
Any other questions? Jim?
Oh, I just, I just say, I don't have any problem knowing the, the kind of people that are on the board at the Rockland Unified School District. I hold them in high regard, and I have no problem, particularly since their district office is in my district. Some of their finer schools are in the Roberts District, but I have no problem with them. I know that they'll do a good job and do the best they can.
Yeah.
Pay the bonds back.
Very competent staff.
I move approval.
Any other questions? All those in favor? Aye? Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number nine, Mr. Buckman. It'll be good for the last item of the board to hear really good news, too.
There's a little button in front of you.
You turn it on.
I'm a newbie at this, so you gotta live. I'm Rick Buckman, I'm the veteran service officer. I've been here since May of '06. I took over the department, and it was really not providing services to veterans. We've made a lot of changes in how we do stuff, and I kinda wanted to give you an understanding of what we've done and how we affect veterans, and I'm never sure that a lot of people that don't receive my services really know what we do. I think they think we do good, do good work, we're helping people that we need to help, but I, I'm never sure they know what we're doing. So that's why I would kinda let you know that we're doing good stuff. When you go around the county and talk about the county that's doing good things, include veterans in there because we are doing stuff for our veterans. As you can see, we're one of the larger departments in the county. I have two claims reps that help me file claims, and I have an administrative secretary who does, answers the phone, she's a receptionist, she orders all the supplies, she does the payroll, she does everything in a very busy office, and it's a, it's a hard thing, and she just works pretty good all the time. I did in the last year hire two work studies, they're VA work studies, they're all paid by the VA, they're totally covered by workers' comp through the federal workers' comp system, no, no cost to the county whatsoever. They do all my filing, they do stuff that would not get done if I didn't have them because we just don't have the time to do that. I want to give you a little background information on veterans around the state and stuff. There's 23 million of us in the United States. In California, we have the largest veteran population in the United States, over 2 million veterans. In Placer County, we have 32,000. Statewide, the projections are that veterans are going to be decreasing over the years, the next 20 years, but in Placer County, the projections are that we will increase the number of veterans. There's two and a half million living World War II veterans that are dying at 900 a day. That's down from about 1,500 from a few years ago, but we're losing quite a few of our World War II veterans. And veterans over age 65, there's almost 40 percent of the veterans. The VA, there's 2.95 million veterans that receive compensation for some kind of injury that happened in the service. Those that are totally disabled are about 260,000. Those are on a low-income VA pension is about 317,000. DIC is husbands died in the service or a service-connected disability, and those that are rated for post-traumatic stress disorder is 342,000. The VA spends $3 billion a year on healthcare in California. I guess a few, a little while ago, they want to spend $8 billion for prison, for healthcare, and the VA only spends $3 billion. 2.8 billion in compensation payments go to veterans in California, and in Placer County, 34 million. We have four major funding sources, and I want to kinda cover all four of them. The first funding source is subvention. There's $2.6 million. There's $2.6 million. We're authorized $5 million, but it's only funded at the 2.6 million level. And it makes up 10% of all county Veteran Service Offices' funding. In Placer County, this fiscal year, we're going to get 61,000, and that's 14% of our budget comes from the state subvention. It's all based on workload units. The more work we do, the more money we get. If we file a claim for compensation, we get a workload unit. I'm malfunctioning. There we go. Pension, low-income pension programs, we get workload for doing that. Vocational rehabilitation, if we file claims, we get credit for that. If we enroll a veteran in the healthcare system, we get credit. We file an insurance claim, whether it's a new claim for insurance because a veteran passed away or they're applying for insurance, and also for burial benefits. This is a graph of the claims that we filed. The year before I got here, they filed a little over 400 claims. Last year, we did 1,700 claims. So far, in this six-month period, we've done over 1,000 claims. As of today, I did ran the numbers, we've run 1,633 claims so far this year. More claims we file, the more money comes into my budget. On an annualized basis, for money that went into pockets of veterans, year before I got here, 750,000. Last year, a little under 9 million. And as of the end of the year, over 10 million. I did, again, the numbers this morning, over $16 million in new benefits that went in the pockets of veterans. That money is, studies estimate, turns over three to seven times in the economy. So that's what we're doing for veterans. As a result of that, our funding level, before we got here, we had about 24,000 in our subvention funding, and this year, we're going to get over 60,000. So we've increased the amount of money that comes into the County General Fund. The second source of funding is our Medi-Cal Cost Avoidance Program. There's 838,000, which makes up 3% of county's budgets. The purpose of that program is somebody applies for some kind of assistance from the county. They refer to us, and we could try to get them off of county money, state money, and get them onto federal money. So we're trying to save money that way. In Placer County, 4% of our budget comes through this thing. Examples of workload units, when they're referred to us, we verify if they're in receipt of money, so they know not to pay them because they have some kind of an income source. We'll file claims for compensation or pension if they may be eligible, so we get them some more federal money. We get them enrolled in the healthcare system, the VA system, so federal government's paying their healthcare costs, not the county and not the state. This shows you the number of verifications that were done. They didn't play this game very much before I got here, and I increased it. And some of those, that first year, the reason it was so high was because there was a bunch of stuff laying around from the previous year that I got, and we did that, and that's why it shows up there. And that's just the six-month projection for actual numbers for this fiscal year. And as a result of those verifications, that shows the number of claims that were filed. Once again, that's only a six-month number. That's our funding. We got $1,100 the first year, and now we're getting over $18,000. The third source of funding is Veteran Service Officer Fund. We sell license plates for veterans. You pay an extra $30 each year for your registration. $29 comes to the counties. $1 goes to the state for administering the program. In California, last year, we used 500, they had 554,000 in that pot of money, and we got 13,866. That's based on your net county cost. So as you can see, they did something well because it was based on the county cost before, and it's pretty stable. But we have increased it a little bit because we've added a new position since I got here, which increased our cost a little bit. It got us a little bit more money out of the license plate funds. And of course, our biggest source is the County General Fund. 85% of all county offices are funded through the general funds. In Placer County, 79% of my budget comes from the general fund. A program that we have is a college fee waiver program. If a veteran has a service-connected disability, the state will pay their tuition at any California junior college, state college, or university. It's a big program. I've gone out and tried to announce it, let people know that that's available to them. The only requirement is that they have a service-connected disability and that the child's income is below the poverty level. Number of fee waivers, it pretty much stays constant based on year-to-year. We have increased a little bit this past year because, I think, because of the outreach that I've done on doing that. And that's the value, that's what's saving veterans money from paying college tuition. We don't try to make too big a deal about that because it does cost the state because they're not paying a tuition, but it's a benefit to the veterans. And the last thing I want to do is talk about the outreach I've done. One of the things I've done is I've gone to Sierra College, and I actually, I go to Sierra College, started yesterday, it's my first day. I go there for four hours, and I see veterans that are at the college. Theory is that they're, we can keep them studying, instead of having to come all the way to Auburn or to Roseville or something, we can help file their claims. If they have questions about their claims, they can just drop in, see me on a regular basis. The college has given me an office there, and they've been really supportive about that. They've started an advisory council. I'm a member of their advisory council for veterans. So we're really doing a lot of stuff with the college now. Homeless, I send a guy to the Gathering Inn on a weekly basis to try to find homeless veterans, get them in healthcare, maybe get them on compensation, get some kind of benefits for them. A thing that we just started is a Veterans Court. There's a change to the penal code or something where a judge could get a veteran if he's been incarcerated because of some kind of, that may be related to post-traumatic stress disorder. And we can get them out of that, out of the jail into a program through the VA. They can maybe reduce their sentence. So we're trying to work with the DA and the sheriff and a judge in trying to get that thing set up. I go around and I do a lot of pension seminars to, that's this low-income thing. I just do a tremendous amount of pension claims. People that are in assisted living, receiving home care. If we can get them benefits from the VA, it's like 1,600 bucks a month. Maybe we can keep them out of nursing homes from going on the Medi-Cal. So that's another cost savings. Maybe make their last years of their lives a little more pleasant for them. I do a lot of in-services for these assisted living facilities, home care things, and I just tell them about this pension program. And they've got all my forms, and they talk to their clients, and they say, here, fill this stuff out. They come over my fax machine, they come over the mail. I mean, and I'm doing 100 of these claims a month, and I'm not doing any work other than it's coming into the office. So the outreach has been done. I got all these people that are telling people about this program, and we're reaping the benefits and being able to file claims for veterans. It's really worked great. And then I go out and I do a lot of talking about the office and what we've done, and to community groups, the Rotary, and those kind of outfits. And it's pretty well-received. So that's pretty much what I wanted to do, just tell you what we do, and we're doing a good job. And if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Kirk?
Yeah, first of all, thank you for both the report and for the service that you're providing. It sounds like you've been wonderfully successful in the relatively short time you've been here. Does DOD make data available to you, to us, about contact information, residence information of veterans, particularly service-disabled veterans? Do they know where their people are, and do they make that then available to us?
If they're receiving money, of course, they know where they're at. And when a veteran is discharged, that information is given to the state. The state puts it in a thing. And monthly, I get a list of all the veterans that have been discharged in Placer County. I send them a letter, welcome home, a copy of my brochure, so they come talk to me. As long as I'm getting that information, I'm able to do it. The VA data is just, is pretty, they're pretty Privacy Act stuff, and it's hard to get anything out of them.
Okay. And are we collecting electronic communication information from these folks, email addresses, things like that, to the extent that we can?
Yeah, you know, I get these claims in the fax, in the mail, or whatever, and I have an email address on there. I'll fill the claims, I'll scan the stuff, and I'll email it to them, and it's back in the mail to me. So it's really a fast, cost-effective way of doing stuff, so. And all the younger veterans have email, of course. And there's an email tree at the college that they send out every Monday, say, hey, Rick's going to be there from 10 to 2, come see him. So there's a way to communicate to the ones that are in the school.
And so the information that you are getting is for all discharges, not just any service-related disability discharge?
Right. Any discharge, any discharge whatsoever.
That they're saying they're returning to Placer County, or they're making Placer County perhaps their after-service home for the first time?
Yeah. And sometimes their home of record is here, and they may live somewhere else or vice versa.
Right.
Some of them you're never sure about, but.
Wonderful. Do you have that information? Or I'm sure if you don't, we could figure out how to get that information broken down by Super Zoro district.
Right, it's by zip code.
Right.
Yeah.
That'd be great. Okay, thank you very much.
Jim?
I put all that information into a database, so I have it there as they come in, and the dates that I got that stuff.
Great, thanks so much.
Jim?
I had a question about the burial benefits. Do they have to be buried in a national cemetery or could they, a local cemetery? Do they qualify for that, or is it?
If a veteran receives any kind of monthly income for pension or compensation, the VA will reimburse up to $600 for burial costs. If it's the cause of death, it's service-connected, they'll pay up to $2,000. Other than that, there's not much.
Okay. I just want to thank you for the outreach, particularly with the Gathering Inn. I know there's a lot of homeless veterans that just don't know that they have the, you know, the.
There's a group here in Auburn that's put in a grant through the VA to come up with 20 transitional housing beds. It's just starting, so if that's going to happen, that's going to be a big deal for us.
And then you're on the Mental Health, Drug, and Alcohol Advisory Board.
At my spare time.
I sit on that as well, and it's, your outreach is just tremendous.
You're in rehab, you said?
Yeah.[1538.12][1538.12](Laughter). But the job you're doing is unbelievable, and I hear so many people from around the area that are, you know, come to me and praise you for what you've done. I know I lost, we lost a veteran last December that was a good friend of mine, and unbeknownst to his wife, she qualified for $1,000 in benefits, and that was a huge relief to her. So anyhow, great job. Thank you.
Jennifer?
I, Rick, thank you for coming out today. I was looking at the documentation you gave us, your memo, and it says, "Action requested slash recommendation none." And I just have to say, my commendation goes to you for the services that you're offering to folks. My dad served, my brother served, my sister was killed in the First Gulf War. And so while I believe it's really important that we honor our veterans, I think it's more important that we offer them tangible ways to have places to live, to put food on the table, to find jobs. Honor's great, but without those other tangible products that you help bring to them, they're, you know, they'll end up living in parks, many of them. I did have a question. What branches do you serve? You say the United States Armed Forces. Does that include the Reserves, National Guard, or?
Yes, I mean, they are veterans, they've been deployed, and they have a discharge. As a matter of fact, Sunday on the 4th or 5th of April, I'm going to go out to the National Guard Unit in Roseville and do a briefing on benefits that are available to them, because I don't think a lot of them know, since they're still in the Guard, that they are veterans and that they're entitled to some benefits.
Great. Again, just thank you so much for the work you do. It's invaluable.
Robert?
Rick, I just want to thank you. You did great work on the results you're having. Thanks.
For the audience-at-home phone number, email address, perhaps?
Yeah.
Not your home phone.
The audience-at-home, the phone.
Well, I'm kind of hesitant to give out the number. I just got an email, they want to change my phone number, so I don't know how long it's going to be. But yeah, the phone number is 530-889-7968, and it's veterans@placer.ca.gov.
And I too would add my thanks. I appreciate what you're doing, and I know the veterans that I interact with in Roseville are very complimentary of what you do. And I was there on Saturday when Congressman McClintock was there for their forum, and I'm sure some of the things they discussed was what you talked about, so.
It was kind of funny. I was on this panel with Congressman McClintock, and the VA was there, and then we all did what we talked about, what we do, and then people asked questions. And about out of the 10 questions, six of them got up and thanked me for the work that I do. And I noticed that about the fifth time McClintock goes down, he writes my name down, so.[1714.12][1714.12](Laughter). I guess he figured out who does veterans in the county.
That's, I think that's a compliment, a very high compliment to the work you're doing, and I know the veterans appreciate it, so thank you.
I appreciate it.
All right. We are done. We will now adjourn.
Oh, we're not done.[1732.23][1732.23](Laughter). The Board will now go into closed session, take up the items.
I don't like the way you said that.[1737.12][1737.12](Laughter).
I'm sorry. We're not quite done. Page three, item 10. We're going to do some litigation matters. There are three listed, and two more were listed on Friday, so there's five existing litigations, one anticipated litigation, conference with labor negotiators, and conference with real property negotiators. And we will finish sometime before dusk.[1764.04][1764.04](Laughter). I'm still positive.